Commissioner Morris will join us here shortly. It's running a little bit late. So, welcome to the special city commission meeting for Tuesday, July 13th, and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, the first item on the agenda is the budget work session, and Jason Hilger's deputy city manager will be doing the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Wanted to just bring to your attention and the audience, this is a special meeting. We do have an action item this evening, which is a little unusual. It's new for the city to actually have to pass this resolution. But the state of Kansas, with its new legislation, is requiring municipalities across the state to take some sort of formal action on revenue neutral rates. So, this evening, we are proposing a resolution this evening that would go to the county clerks to notice them of our position and our intentions on the revenue neutral rate. So, I'll go ahead and get into the presentation here, but wanted to bring that to your attention. Typically, we go right into work session format, but we do have a formality here to address before we get into the chambers presentations. So, as I mentioned, by July 20th, we have to notify the county clerks of our intentions. Staying revenue neutral is essentially collecting the same amount of property taxes as the prior year. So, that can be influenced by your valuation. It can also be influenced by your mill levy. Your mill levy can stay the same and your valuation increase, and you're still not revenue neutral. Your valuation can obviously move around too, and your mill levy go up or down, but there's always going to be a calculation based on the revenues you generated or collected last year. Just some examples here of things increasing slightly. It's still going to require us to notice the public of a revenue neutral rate not being met. So, next year, we anticipate we will not be revenue neutral. We already know the valuation is increasing, even though it's slight. We know the mill levy for PD has increased. The proposed levy for the library has gone up, and our proposed levy for the city has also increased. This is a chart that shows you where we've been in '21 with a mill levy rate of 49.835, and then where we're at today with the proposed rates for '22. The increase or decrease is highlighted out to the side for each of these mill levy supported funds, and you can see a 5.079 mill levy increase. This is what we are proposing. We publish, and I'll say this many times this evening, it would be a maximum. It would be a cap. You could always reduce that total mill levy down. You obviously could not increase it after you publish that rate. This chart attempts to highlight a little bit the differences between '21 and '22. You can see the incremental growth in a lot of these mill levy rates. We really bring attention, then, to both the mill levy rates for RCPD and for the city, and provide a little bit of explanation on each of those. There's no argument that PD has an $821,000 budget increase. That's been widely known and published and talked about. We have added to that. We have created a delinquency that wasn't funded last year. We have a cash balance of about $9,000 was our ending cash balance in the Riley County Police Fund, which isn't healthy. It's not a good place to be in the event we don't realize all the taxes that we need to support that fund. So, we've also increased the fund balance in that line item. Both of those things are resulting in about a 2.378 mill levy increase. That's important to point out, it's not up to the law board to budget for delinquencies. It's not up to the law board to budget for cash balances. But, as the stewards of those monies, if they're not realized in these two formats and revenues don't come in, we would have to go find that revenue somewhere else. And we have exhausted the cash balance in the RCPD fund, and we need to build that back up. So, that's why it's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar, mill levy-for-mill levy comparison to what PD and the law board approved. We've adjusted that delinquency rate in the past. Obviously, last year, it was zero. We took a lot of risk doing that, and we spent almost all the cash balance in doing so. So, it's a budgeting process and a technique in order to support those funds moving forward. We also highlight the 1.468 mill levy increase, which is roughly about $900,000, which goes towards our people. This is our cost of living. This is our step increases. These are promotions, a few additional staff that we've incorporated. It's roughly that $900,000. Now, when we were before you, before, we talked about a $2 million general fund impact. We had about 1.2 million for people, and we had about $700,000 CIP. That has been reduced. It is at $900,000. We have proposed to fine the 700K for the CIP out of cash balances, and we have taken some of our personnel costs and cut those. We didn't fund some positions. We didn't fund some promotions. So, that's where we landed on the $900,000. The fire equipment reserve and the KPNF are, we have obligations in both of those funds. The fire equipment reserve obviously is there to help pay for equipment at the fire station, which we've already obligated. These are mill levies in order to help support those, that debt payment. And KPNF, again, we're reacting to where we're at in our employee benefit fund with our fire. Any questions on those mills? Just an example, we always like to give you guys a reference of what this looks like to an average residential property. $200,000 is fairly close to our average property owner in Manhattan from a residential perspective. You take that, times that 11 and 1/2% to get that assessed value, one mill is going to equal roughly $23. So, you get into the five mill discussion, it's $116. It'd be about nine, about 10 bucks a month, 32 cents a day. Commercial property, again, just an example, you can take this math and apply it to any value you have for residential or commercial, but on the commercial side, you need to take it times 25% for the assessed valuation. A mill, take it times .001, it's 1/1,000th of a value to get your impact financially. It's $125 a year for one mill. Five mills would be 630, almost $635. Again, just over 50 bucks a month, $1.76 a day. Our past recommendations to you, we've been looking for mill levy support in the general fund pretty consistently now for the past five years. We're trying to reduce that reliance on inconsistent revenues and provide a reliable revenue source for those consistent services we like to provide. We're also looking to stabilize that city's financial position. Our cash balances, if you look at the forecast sheets, which I highly encourage you to do, that were in the packet this evening, there are a lot of cash balances that have been shown in the last five years on a downward trend. We have relied on those balances to operate, and in some instances, just cut services as well. It's not sustainable. You keep going on that trend, you end up with no money in cash balances or, and additional services cut. We've been met with some resistance. There's some things in the community that are happening. Some of them due to COVID, some of them not being able to hire back, some of them due to budget cuts. We have things that the pool's not functioning and operating. We have one pool not open. We have a wave machine not operating. We have Blue Earth Park not operating. We have a number of facilities that are not being maintained by city staff. They're contracted out. Those are stopgap measures. They're practices that are being implemented because we have seen a reduction in revenues. And again, it's not sustainable to eat away at cash balances moving forward. And again, it just, it's the consistent conversation we've been having. We're going to have to reduce, scale back, possibly eliminate some services if we don't fund these, these operations. We'd like to see a long-term approach. We reiterated this at past work sessions. This one-year approach is getting us into a position where we have these downward trends. We need to start looking at this three and five years in advance, and the mill levies is a big part of that. Resolution you have before you this evening does three things. It establishes that max rate at 54.914 mills. It sets the hearing for the revenue neutral rate for September 7th, 7:00 PM, and it also authorizes direct notice of that hearing. This year, the county is only obligated to publish that notice in a paper. Next year, that notice will go to every property owner. Section 3 then provides this resolution in a direction to the county clerks. Again, we will have two hearings that night. One, on the revenue neutral rate. The other, we anticipate a hearing on the budget. The revenue neutral rate, as I mentioned, can't increase from that published rate, and it's the same process we do when we publish the budget. It cannot increase, but it can decrease. So, both of those will be up for discussion that evening. Now, the mill levy can obviously move between now and September 7th. A lot of discussions and guidance from you, we can obviously decrease it, but there, there will not be any flexibility to increase it past that, this point. So, whatever we publish at, it's that point and lower. And that's really the position we're in this evening. We know we don't need to fully debate this, but it is the rate that will be published. So, there has to be some comfort amongst the commission with a rate you're willing to go out there and publish and hold a hearing on, even though by then, that budget may have actually been published at a much lower rate. That'll create a little bit of confusion potentially for the public, but you've got two months to figure out what you want to do with the rest of the budget. We'll publish that budget at the end of August, and we'll host that hearing on September 7th. This is new. That's why I'm trying to go over it multiple times. This is brand-new to us. We're reacting again. No more tax lid, but we do have these notification requirements. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this point about the process, about the resolution, or the mill levy in general.
Jason, will you do me a favor and break it down to, I think, that $200,000 average family, the max that this allows is roughly $10, an increase of $10 per month, or about, or $973 a month, and about $116 over the course of the fiscal year?
Yeah. So, this is, again, you can take your own property value, take it times 11 and 1/2%, and then take it times .001. That'll give you the value of the mill for your individual property. At 5.079 mills, we, we will not go above that if we publish at that rate, that 54.9, I believe, that 5.079 mill difference. It won't go any higher than that.
So, this same number here, this 973 a month, average based on the $200,000 residential property, that's 10 bucks a month, is also the same thing as what was, you know, published as considering a 12% increase?
Correct.
So, it's, it's a matter of 10%. If I hear my, my poverty taxes are going up 10% or 12% or something, also, that means in real dollars, $9.73. So, it's, it's a matter of how you interpret those numbers, I guess.
It is, and it can get really confusing and a hurry in terms of, you know, that $200,000 residential property has 155 to 156 mills that it has to pay. You know, we're only 49 now, 54 in the future of that 156. You've got 60-some coming from the district and another 40-some coming from the county. Now, now you've just thrown a lot of different numbers at me, and, and that breakdown looks a lot different. We can provide that to you as well, and really, any citizen out there that'd like to see that breakdown. You know, we are 11% of your overall tax bill.
And to follow up, the, the RCPD and the library, those things that are kind of automatic that have been baked in, have, in the past, we've, we've really kind of pulled ourselves to, if they've gone up, we've pulled down more than what we probably should have to sustain our organization. And I guess the question I've been asking is, what does it take to fund this organization so we have staff where they're supposed to be in the facilities that the property tax owners have, have invested in? Now, we get to staff them and run it. Earlier this year, we heard you talk about how you wanted to, maybe, or Ron talked about how maybe we don't, we set those aside, because those are, those are things we can't necessarily control very well, anyway, of the city and the, I mean, the RCPD budget and the library fund. But, this part is about half of that, or?
Yeah. If you, if you look at the library EBF fund and RCPD's delinquency and PD, this is roughly 2 and 1/2 mills. The top four here. The bottom six, bottom five is, is another 2 and 1/2, roughly.
So, are we talking, so if we're rounding up to that $10, we're talking about $5, or?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure. Just for city services, strictly, or for the city?
Yep.
But if you include the library and RCPD, we're going up to that 973.
Yep.
I have a question about the RCPD delinquency thing. I thought we realized last year, when every other source of tax revenue was crapping out on us, that we were very pleased that pretty much the property taxes were almost all completely collected. So, what, so is, so is your concern that the 27, 261 that the, the RCPD has as a mill levy, that is to give them the full amount of, of their budget with no spare dollar available to us? Is that right? And so, is it a concern that if there's a 1% delinquency in property taxes, now we've got to have to come up with $400,000? Is that essentially the argument for the delinquency fund?
Yes, that's correct. And, and so, it gets back to, you know, a lot of different sources feed that, and Rena and Rebecca, or maybe Jason can comment on it, but, so we get motor vehicle taxes. So, one of the thing, one of the, and we get estimates that we make up on how much revenue. Now, were some of the delays in some of those motor vehicle taxes because of COVID? Maybe. You know, we don't know all of those. But, at the end of the day, when we have a shortfall, we know we're going to have less revenue from Home Depot, from the, the tax appeals. So, you get, you get tax appeals that are upheld or, or reduce the amounts that were envisioned. So, those are shortfalls. So, that would be why you would issue a delinquency for people that have either defaulted or won their appeals and pay less. So, otherwise, we're having to make it up out of, we have to cut our departments or take money out of our reserves in order to make that full payment. We're statutorily bound to make a full payment to both the RCPD and the library.
So, my next question becomes, how much money, I don't remember if you mentioned how much money .581 mills will generate for that delinquency fund? Is that another 700, 800,000?
Yeah. You got the 20, you levy roughly 80 grand, but 347,000 is what you anticipate levying with a .581.
Okay, 347,000.
Yeah. Mark, one of the, Commissioner Haddasal, one of the other examples, and Ron alluded to it, we, we realized it. We had a subdivision, not pay their taxes. Or, or you have, you know, just other circumstances that don't generate the amount of property tax you anticipated. You know, we, the debate was had in this room at a city-county meeting as to how to handle that, and we were obligated to make the payment. Not, everybody's going to share in the pain, not, you're going to cut and we're going to cut. We were obligated to make that payment. We ended the year in that cash balance with $9,000. We're funding a $17 million operation, and we ended the year with $9,000. That's highly concerning to us.
Not a lot of margin. My, my next question would be, if the RCPD didn't think of themselves as a federal agency in the sense of, we're down to the last month of the year, we got to burn through this money because it's, the way the federal government works, you get to the end of the year, and it's like, we got to spend this stuff because we might not get it next year. Back in the old days, when there used to be leftover money at the end of the year, that would just keep the mill levy that much less the next year, right? Okay. So, is, I, I don't want to throw the RCPD under the bus here, so to speak, but I would like them to start thinking, if you get, have half a million dollars left as we're getting toward the end of the year, don't blow it on all these prep projects that may or may not have been in the budget to start with. Participate in the pain that the city employees and the firepeople and the other entity receivers of city money are having, that are getting butt-cut budgets and decreased funding and things like that, and not go on a shopping spree just to burn through that rest of the money because that's how the federal government does it, because that is not how the history of the RCPD budgeting has been from what I remember when I was on the law board and various other times. So, that, that's a little bit my, my concern, and so, it's, so if you got some extra money because of couldn't hire people and there's fewer, less expenses, it would, I think would be a good faith gesture on their part to let the taxpayers know, yes, we were able to save a little bit of money this year and carry forward $400,000 for next year, knock the mill levy down 2/3 of a mill or something. That's my soapbox moment for tonight so far.
Jason, I, I think they do that. I mean, looking at what you have here on the, on the RCPD sheet, that they do typically carry it over to the next year. It seems like it was 9,000 in 2020, but 5,200, I'm sorry, 5,000, 500,000 dollars was transferred to the next year. And then it says for 2021, 1.3 million as far as the cash balance. So, is that the expectation that's going to be moving over?
Our management of our fund is, is different than what Commissioner Haddasal is describing. We take in revenues. We transfer revenues to PD. We're obligated to transfer a certain amount of money. If the valuation increases or something along the lines generates more revenue, it sits in that fund. Then, it comes back to you the next year, and you see the cash balance, and you, you gauge just how much to keep.
Right.
So, what Mark described as savings at the end of the year, in recent times, haven't been returned to the city. They may stay in their account, which is not with the city.
Right.
We transfer that money to PD. PD operates independently of our fund and our, our accounts. So, what they're doing on there then is, is really not to our knowledge. What is to our knowledge is the revenue coming in that's supported by motor vehicle tax and property taxes that we then transfer to PD. That's our control. That's what you see, not their operation.
So, being on law board in the past, typically what I saw was they would utilize it in PD. What you're saying is they didn't give it back to the city. I get that piece of it. But it was put into their budget because there were years when there were no increase in mill levy and years when they were under their mill levy.
Sure.
Because they had carryover.
Sure.
Cash carryover. So, they're not giving it back to the city, but they're not misusing funds. So, I just...
Yeah. I, I do believe the law board has those conversations.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's just, you're, you're talking about different funds and different uses of money than you are with the city.
Right. So, when I look at this, our revenues obviously are not keeping up with expenses, our expenditures. And our major expenditure is personnel, whether it's with PD, whether it's with city, or whether it's with library, or our fire department. Personnel, salary increases and benefits and such. That's going to come annually. So, if we go, let's say, 54, will, will that be the end of it? Will that cover it for years to come? Because every year, it's going to increase unless our revenues start increasing. That million to $2 million is continually going to increase, which means a continuation of three mill levies, three mill increases, yeah, each, each year.
Yeah. I think, I think Commissioner McKee made a comment up here a couple of years ago when he said, every year, there will be a million dollars additional to our budget to pay our people 3%.
Right.
And he's accurate.
So, how do we stop that?
Either reduce, either reduce services.
Right.
Cut your budgets, or generate revenue some other way.
Right. Or can we dedicate two mills just for personnel every year?
Well, that's in effect what we're asking you to do tonight. That 1.468 mills is a million dollars.
Yeah.
Roughly. And that's what we're asking you to add to the existing 48, or 49.835.
Right. Because our revenues, you would think as a growing city, and we're thriving, and we use all these buzzwords, but if that thriving is not bringing in revenue needed, we can't continue increasing mill levies.
And we can all talk about why sales tax are flat. We can all talk about transient guest tax. We can all talk about municipal court fines and franchise fees and a lot of revenue streams that we have just watched be flat. Cash balances are a big part of this conversation, and this is where we've tried to get back with you all to realize if we can get cash balances to a point, you can absorb some of these blows along the way, some of these dips, some of these peaks and valleys that we experience in these revenue streams. But when your revenue, you know, your cash balances are all trending down, you, that's where the focus comes back to the most reliable revenue stream there is, in order to get your cash balances back. Now, once you get them back, then you've got some flexibility. But we've, we've ridden this train about five years where sales tax have been flatter declining, and we have not increased the mill levy for the support of this organization. That's why our cash balances have been eaten into. So, do you have to raise the mill by a mill, the mill levy by one mill every year for people? Not necessarily. But you do have to be strategic about building those cash balances. So, if you want relief, you have it. But then you got to come back and regenerate those, those cash balances. And for five years, we've been eating into them, and we need to build those cash balances back up.
And also, how do we invest so we get our revenue back up? Because we can't just do that one.
Yeah. And, and I, I agree with you, and there's things that we've talked about internally, things that we should talk about at the commission level. We rely a tremendous amount on sales tax, a tremendous amount, you know. And then, when we look to retail in our community, how can we become more attractive? The brown boxes that keep showing up at people's front doors are taking revenue away from the organization and the community. How can we get more people to shop? How, you know, where is that headed? Where is retail headed? Where's commercial property headed? A lot of things going on in the country and in the world right now influencing shopper behavior. You know, how can we strategically put ourselves in a better position?
Well, I'm also looking at property taxes. So, our valuations are going up. There are people buying lots of homes and properties here, but I don't know why Pot County looked like they were decreasing in property valuation when Riley County is increasing. So, if, if our consistent space is property taxes as a reliable tax source, revenue source, and it looks like it's gaining, but it's not enough. So, did, in Pot County, did they, are they not valued as much, or what's going on?
That 55 million is that commercial property on that east side of town. That's out, you know, it's in the city, but it's outside Riley County. It's in Pot County. 1.2% decrease is what they anticipate. I know a lot of people in 2020 didn't realize the revenues that they had in the past. Even Riley County Appraisers Office slashed all hotel properties by 30% in valuation because of their revenues. Now, I agree with you. Things are picking back up. 2021 is going to be different than 20, but right now, we're, we're all basing valuations and mill levies off of data from last year.
Well, I'll come back to the conversation, but 54, it will be confusing to the public when we go back and forth on.
Yeah. And, and I think that confusion is going to be there regardless, because for the commission on July 13th, to know what its mill levy's going to be by the time September 7th runs around, we've never had a, we've always, you know, been there negotiating. we've never had a concern, we've always, you know, been there negotiating back and forth, whittling it down, increasing it here and there. So it's very difficult by July thirteenth to know what your mill levy is going to be for a hearing on September seventh. But that is, those are the rules, tho- those are the rules we have to play by.
And I also want to know how we can use our economic development funds in this process as well.
Sure.
What, what, what would be eligible and what would be not eligible?
And we've looked at EcoDevo funds picking up portions of the mill levy in the past. You know, there, there's always that debate, just what do you do with them? Do you get into the bond and interest fund and find projects that are supported by the mill levy that EcoDevo can transfer into? We've done that in the past. We've looked at sometimes even, you know, projects and equipment and just very rarely have we ever went there. It's usually into that bond and interest fund looking for projects that we, the commission feels like we should use EcoDevo for, for that given year. I would encourage you all to look at the bond and interest forecast and pay attention to the cash balance that was there five years ago and the cash balance that's there today. That's a, it's probably one of our most impacted funds by us eating into a cash balance. There's obviously room for debate and discussion over how much we should have for a cash balance in a bond and interest fund. But I will tell you, when you're spending twenty-five to thirty million dollars a year retiring anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred million in debt, having a cash balance of significance is important. You don't want to risk not having enough cash there.
And the thing with property taxes is even though it might seem like quote unquote not as much, or when you break it down to months and days, it will fall on, when we are sixty-five percent rental air community, it will fall on the renters also at the same time. So just a few things to think about during this process. I don't like that we have to do this for tonight either. So we'll see.
So Jason, what's the dollar increase on that, that slide, the one that, the previous one? Because the assessments,
Oh, yeah.
you know, drove it up, so how much more money, like with a flat mill levy, how much more money comes in? Is it three million on there or?
I think the hundred and sixty-three is where we're at.
So that's it?
Yep, you get the four hundred and nine from Riley County, but you're a negative two forty-six in Pot. So it nets out at one sixty-three.
Okay, so that's the increase?
Correct.
Okay.
With a flat mill levy.
All right.
I, I thought his question was with a five mil increase,
Oh, no, no, no.
what will that make?
Yeah.
Three, that's the three point three.
Yeah, that's the difference between twenty-nine million and thirty-two million, that's just three point two million dollar figure.
Got it.
Yep.
Yeah, two million for that.
Yep. But I think Lynn was just trying to point out what your valuation was year to year, yep.
For several years, I've been an advocate for taxing short-term stay transactions here in the city. And I feel like the city administration has been really slow to bring that forward. And I don't, I, I mean, I believe that that's our source of revenue, just as we depend on transient guest tax for our hotel stays. We need this short-term stay because it's not fair between the hotels and all of the people coming into this community and staying in private homes or maybe an apartment building that's just like a hotel, but not, and I want to move on that. I'm tired of those just getting the best of us. It's like the internet sales tax. It's a huge amount by the time we ever get around to doing something about it. And I, I, I am interested in fairness for those who pay taxes, so that needs to be equalized as far as I'm concerned. The internet sales tax has resolved itself through court cases, I guess, but certainly not at our initiative or anybody else's initiative. It's been a really slow process. We have, for the last roughly five years, four years, been close to zero, close to hardly any property tax increases. Whether last year was like half a mil, and the year before, or maybe this year it was zero, I don't know. Anyway, we tried to keep it as close to zero as we could. What also happens when we do that is just what you said, we eat out our core of our own organization. Because other organizations just keep going up. Capers, the Fireman's Fund, those go on their way. The, any, well, I could list them all probably, but certainly the Chamber wants to be made whole with where they were before twenty twenty. I mean, we have demands on us that we don't always have control over. And I am, I'm growing impatient with the constant blaming of RCPD. It is not our big problem. We have a, a, a bigger problem with our own budget than we do with the auxiliary budgets, whether it's the library or we have to look at ourselves and try to rein in ourselves and set a marker. But we also have been very, what, assertive with a building, whether it's the joint ma- those, those projects we had on the ballot two years ago weren't funded by, at a public vote. And we have proceeded to fund them anyway. And that's going to, of course, cause a, a, a spending issue for the city as a whole because we're moving on them anyway. And so we have to do the mill, the, the reconstruction of the levy. There's just no doubt in anyone's mind that we have to proceed with that while the Army Corps of Engineers has the federal funding. We can't miss that opportunity. But I, I'm interested in a, a maju- maximum damage from the dark store possibility for this year, so you could bring that back to us at some time, an estimate from the county. And I'm also, something we have not discussed and is not anywhere in here are the ARP funds that we have, which is seven million dol- six point something million for this year and another six point for next year. Some of that's going to be reimbursement for what we've already spent. But it does impact our budget for this year. And we have to take that into our, into consideration as we put this puzzle together. And I'll probably have more later, thanks.
Mayor Commissioners, I'd like to speak to the ARPA funds if I could. Commissioner Morris is correct that we have received those funds. The public comment period for the interim final rules ends essentially, I believe it's Monday. Technically, it's Saturday, but since Saturday's not a working day, it's, it's, they're giving you until Monday. Part of that, there, there's nothing in the interim rules that basically says we can use that money pretty much however we want to do certain things. It's pretty highly restricted. It's, there's a net revenue calculation that's not favorable to us. So where we took measures to, with our hiring freeze, with cutting expenditures to save cash, those cash balances are considered in that formula as net revenue. So they're looking at a formula for net revenue and then if you have negative net revenue, you can draw on those funds for general purposes. One of our comments that we're submitting is that we should be allowed to utilize the funds for targeted special revenue funds, things like transient guest tax, things like special alcohol tax, zoo attendance in the zoo fund, PF passenger facility charges. So those entities that were hurt the worst because of COVID, we think should have an ability to utilize those funds. There's also, you know, we had about two point eight million dollars in CARES reimbursement. We had a lot more expenses than that. Right now, ARPA funds cannot be used to supplant any of those funds. It's from March thirty-first of this year forward. So we're asking to be able to use it on previous CARES eligible expenses. We won't know those rules. Treasury hasn't given us a deadline as to when they think they'll be able to analyze all the comments they've received and issue the final rules. It's very possible that we might know before the September public hearing. And that could help us make some, again, would be one-time adjustments. It helps bolster some of our cash carryover, but it also moves some of these other issues to another budget year for debate on how we sustain things. You know, some of the, one of the lines you don't see here, we've talked about creating a capital improvement equipment fund that's supported. We're doing that out of cash balances for next year. That's something that would be nice to shore up so that we have a multi-year strategy for how we fund those equipment. I'll use RCPD as an example because it's a good one. It's critical that they have good operating equipment. So I could argue that it's critical for the city to have good operating equipment. And we have our fire equipment reserve fund, which makes sure we do have fire trucks that will make it to the fire. But we have other critical services that we need that equipment for too. And it takes a, a pretty good chunk of funds on an annual basis to be able to ensure that we have that. And we've struggled to be able to fund those CIP items. So those are just, again, a multi-year strategy that we've talked about to try and shore up some of these things where some of these cash balances, if we can use them for some general purposes, will be very beneficial to us. But right now, we don't have the ability to do much of that to help us at this point till we know what those final rules are. The good news is, is we'll have four to six years to complete those expenditures. So unlike CARES, which had to be done by the end of the calendar year last year, we'll have additional years to help us with allocate those funds. Most of the direction we've got is they want us to target those funds for specific programs. Those same programs are targeted by a lot of other federal sources of revenue. So again, those are just some of the issues that we face. And hopefully we'll have some definitive answers on that prior to your budget hearings.
I feel certain we'll find a way to spend them. Just don't know what category yet.
Commissioner, you had a, a slide earlier that, that showed the mill levy increase over the past ten years. Because Commissioner Morris was, basically stated that it was like zero and point five, and I don't believe that's correct. I know last year we, we had zero mil increase, we stayed flat because of COVID, but my recollection is it's gone up every year except for once in the ten years I've been here. And it's been in the neighborhood of one to one point seven, I think your average was one point seven?
Yeah, and I, I assumed your comments were more about city ops and not combination of PD, library and city. But yeah, when we talk about city mill levies, incorporates all of those operations.
Can I? I want to follow up on that. So Jason, you just made a distinction between city ops and including RCPD and library. So to clarify, city ops has been pretty flat, is that what the correct, okay, so. I am just going to circle back to, we've, I mean, I've been on the commission now a very short time, but almost the entire time has been a discussion in part about a lack of personnel, a lack of retention, a lack of funding the organization excellence initiative, reasons why we couldn't do that. We blame flat sales tax. We hear we need a reliable foundation to put that on. You say it about a million different ways, but we're talking about paying for people with something that we can count on, which is property tax, which boils down to, we haven't done it for a decade. It's going to cost five dollars on a two hundred thousand dollar to fund the city to operation, and opt to operate it at capacity. So we get squishy. And I was on the school board and alls we could do is talk about property tax. So this isn't, this, this discussion is not squishy to me. It's kind of silly because we need to fund the personnel to run the organization in a way. And if you're, it's somewhere between here and, and five, then that's what it is. Nobody's been able to show any different, we can't run and offer those services and run the organization like we want to or that we're expected to. The other side of it is, man, I'm a taxpayer and, oh, it, it hurts, our taxes are high, right? Well, we also voted for a twenty mil swing to fund the school district, right? Like that, that's a big jump, that's twenty mills, forty-two to sixty-two or something like that.
Thirteen, yeah.
Yeah, and so there's, there's a big chunk there. And that's a big portion of why people feel that pain from the property tax. It doesn't mean that it was not appropriate, but it means, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be able to talk about two or two and a half mills to fund our organization, to fund the whole city operation, so. That's, that's kind of my, my soapbox.
We, we are the inconsistent institution. We, we do have other revenue streams. And in years past, we've seen it. We've seen the valuation, we've seen the sales tax, we've seen the other revenue streams pick it up. We absolutely have. We've been a benefactor of that. We don't solely rely on property taxes. The school district does, the county primarily does. Pr- RCPD does, we don't. And that's why we're only eleven percent of the total, because we have so many other revenue streams. Just reiterate, they haven't been there. So either tell us what not to do or find the reliable sources.
Well, tonight's not the final discussion, so we will continue this discussion. I'm not ready to settle at the number that's presented. There is going to be a long conversation.
Yep.
But you're talking about the resolution. And for that purpose, you put it at, at this, but we have a, several weeks of discussion on this. When we talk about the rescue funds that might be coming in and the extra balance or whatever we might have, or even the sales tax that was passed and what we might, you know, collect in twenty twenty-three, all of these things, we need to continue that discussion, what's in EcoDevo funds and how do we utilize that? Property taxes are, like I said on the paper, may not seem as much, but it is. It is a lot when we talk about this much of an increase. There are very few commercial properties that are valued at five hundred thousand. In fact, more homes are valued at five hundred thousand than actual commercial properties. So when we think about the community that we live in, there's very few houses that are at two hundred thousand. And we always hear how expensive it is to live in the city of Manhattan. If people could find a house at two hundred thousand, that'd be great. The problem is they can't. It's beyond that, it's more to four hundred and five hundred thousand. So those are the discussions we need to continue to have. We're not going to prolong that discussion tonight itself, that's what the next several weeks are going to be for. So we'll see where we want to settle as far as this resolution is this evening. But I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with, with what has been presented, except for the purposes of the resolution.
Nobody signed up for public comments tonight, but we'll take any public comments if anyone is out there that wishes to speak on this particular item. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments then. Any other commissioner comments on this? So I'll, I'll just make one, I'm, I'm not going to support fifty-four point six four one mills. It's too much. And I understand the logic, you know, but that, that's just outrageous. I got several emails on it today, people up in arms on that, that's, that's excessive.
So can we reduce it? I mean, it's not like a, a go thing right now, so.
That, that's true, what, we don't have to, we need to pass this motion because it's not going to be revenue neutral. I mean, I, I get that. It doesn't have to, the, the max doesn't have to be fifty-four, it can be somewhat lower than that.
So which one is the typo, fifty-four nine or fifty-four six? What is the correct, is the one in the motion?
Motion says fifty-four six four one.
That'd be the right one?
Be my error, yeah.
Can we take that out of Jason's, sorry?
Please do. Well, this one says fifty-nine, fifty-four nine one. Well, this one says 59, 54.914.
That one says 914.
I'd say it's 914 if it's in the resolution. Yeah, 914.
So the motion's wrong.
All those other references are wrong, 914 is right.
All right. Well, traditionally, when you've, when you've thrown out a-
It didn't get changed, did it? Yep.
A max mill levy thing at some point during the budget discussions, we've always scaled it back still. So it's not, it's never been a precedent, we say, okay, we're going to put a maximum mill levy of this, and then left it there. We've always scaled it back, so, yeah, I have no intention on supporting a 54.914, but I'll make the motion to do it tonight, but don't expect, that doesn't mean I support a five-mill increase. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 071321A regarding the governing bodies' intent to levy a 2022 property tax exceeding the revenue-neutral rate with a proposed maximum mill levy of 54.914 mills and setting a public hearing related there to on September 7th, 2021 at 7:00 PM right here at City Hall, 1101 Point Avenue, Manhattan, Kansas.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so city clerk, could you please call the role?
Mayor Butler?
No.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebro?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a discussion item, there won't be any further votes this evening. And this is to review and discuss the 2022 budget requests for the Chamber Economic Development, Military Relations, and Convention and Visitors Bureau, along with mid-year updates.
All right, well, thank you very much, commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. In light of the discussion, I'm going to go off script for just a minute, even though I probably have everybody back here panicked when I say that. You know, as an organization and our members, we are all very sympathetic to the discussion that you all are faced in determining community services versus taxes, and because it impacts our members, it impacts all the residents of this community, and it's a very difficult discussion to have. And our businesses face the same challenges every, every year, and are facing the same challenges now. So we decided to try to figure out exactly what was going on in the economy that would cause us stagnation, and asked Eric Higgins with Kansas State to do a complete analysis of our economy. And it's clear that from 2012, we saw 7,000 job reduction at Fort Riley, that's troops and civilian jobs. We've lost 10,000 family members from Fort Riley since 2012. From its peak, we've lost 3,500 students, which has created 400 fewer FTEs at Kansas State. It's amazing that we're flat considering what has gone on in the public sector in this community. And our organization believes we, the only way that this, we can come out of this and have consistent incomes for our governing bodies, and quite frankly, for our local businesses, which we're obviously concerned with as, because they're our members, is we have to have more jobs, we have to have more visitors, we have to have people making more money on an annual basis, and we have to have more people choosing to live in Manhattan. And so those are the things that we think are incredibly important if we're going to be able to come out of some of these challenges, that not just the city, but the county and the schools and the other governing bodies and our private businesses in this community if we're going to come out of it. So while, while it's obviously difficult to have to listen to you all wrestle with these challenges and then know you have to present next, and maybe, maybe that is a good lead-in to what we're going to talk about, because what we're going to talk about is are the ways that we're trying to increase the income for this community in all ways. So apologize for getting a little bit off on a tangent, but I thought it was an important distinction to make. Thank you for the opportunity to be, to stand in front of you tonight to discuss the activities of our organization and make our official request for budgetary consideration in 2022. Scheduled to speak this evening are Darren Solden, Sarah Siders, Janet Nichols, and Karen Hibbert. Before we begin, I want to mention how much we appreciate your continued leadership and support for our tourism and economic development efforts. Manhattan's ability to work collectively on these issues is what sets us apart from other communities. We do not take the duties entrusted us by both you and our private investors lightly. We are focused on maintaining the high-quality life expected by Manhattanites while working diligently to expand opportunities for all citizens. First, our economic development team will present their mid-year report. Since we came to you 18 months ago and described our plan to implement Region Reimagine, we have seen significant strides in all areas we discussed. From a business attraction perspective, we discussed the need to grow the pipeline. I'm happy to report that in two years, we've seen our open project count grow from about a dozen to nearly 50. This has been accomplished through a variety of activities which you'll hear about. I'm confident in saying that based on the numbers, we will begin to see more results like BevHub very soon. We told you 18 months ago we were going to be committed to existing business, recognizing that over 80% of new jobs come from businesses already located in the community. Since hiring George Cant last year, we have formally surveyed over 100 local businesses and contacted over 1,000 in an effort to maximize growth opportunities. I have no problem stating that we have one of the best existing business programs in the country, and want to commend George on advancing this program in a limited time. We committed to you we were going to advance the cause of entrepreneurship at unprecedented levels for Manhattan. Spark is celebrating its one-year anniversary this month and has advanced our startup community immensely in all sectors and with all demographics. Additionally, our continued support of SBDC is vital in helping businesses start and grow in Manhattan. We said for the first time we must focus on talent attraction and retention. Over the past year, we have had a presence at dozens of regional job fairs and Fort Riley events for the first time, making contact with hundreds of graduates and soldiers to promote opportunities to live, work, and play in Manhattan. Tonight, we will also discuss a new program we will be launching in August that will finally create a toolkit for local HR professionals and an online presence to portray Manhattan in a more inviting light. Amber Wilhelm is our lead and promotes our community in a way it deserves by someone who truly loves it. Finally, we are working to improve the product we have to sell, including identifying future business parks and seeking out capital for speculative built facility investment. All this is to say, we are moving forward at levels we had hoped when Region Reimagine was launched in 2018. Janet Nichols with the Military Relations Committee will present her mid-year report as well. Janet has been consistent in her communications with Fort Riley during the pandemic, including helping connect leadership at the post with health officials in Riley County. We believe her work helped in the development of policies that ultimately led to reducing restrictions a bit quicker, a boost for local business and city sales tax. In addition to her normal program, which she will address, it's worth noting that Janet helped secure this region's recent DESEP grant application on behalf of the airport. The leadership of Fort Riley wanted one project from the region to submit, and the airport was selected as a top need by our regional partners. She also is working significantly to integrate Fort Riley assets better into our economic development program, which you will hear a little bit more about later. This is possible because Janet is a well-respected and consistent voice representing Manhattan to the leadership of Fort Riley. Finally, you will hear from Karen Hibbert. As you know, the past 18 months have been excruciating for the travel and tourism industry. While we are starting to see some positive signs, it's a long road back to pre-pandemic levels. In order to facilitate a program through these times, we made some difficult decisions, including staff reductions. We were also able to spend some funds we had in reserves to maintain a presence in the marketplace, which we believe has created an environment to rebound quickly now that events are moving back to full swing. In addition to their consistent messaging and attracting visitors throughout the country, the CVB team has been hard at work on strategies and tactics to take advantage of our newest investments in the conference center and the new recreation centers. I want to commend Karen and Marshall Rozell for their dedication to the community and always maintaining an optimistic voice when working on the city's behalf. While the past 18 months has certainly presented challenges before unseen, I'm thrilled to be in front of you tonight with these reports. Again, thank you for your leadership and your partnership, and I would believe, I had Darren listed first, but do we want to have Janet go first?
Switch it.
You want to switch it? All right, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Darren.
Could you make that full screen for the whole? There you go, thank you.
Jason, I've never run that part of the presentation before. Hope I did you justice. Good evening, I appreciate you all having us here this evening. I'm Darren Solden, Director of Economic Development for the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, and I appreciate Jason's overview there of everything that we've had going on. I do feel like we've done an exemplary job, and I'm going to take the opportunity to give a shout out to our, our staff for the work that they've done over the course of the time I've been here now for the last couple of years, and I think that that really speaks to, and Jason highlighted a number of things there, but it really speaks to the fact we've got a group that's incredibly engaged, loves this community, and sees bright things ahead. So with that, I'm going to dive in here. Last fall at our, or last winter in December at our, at our annual report that we do comprehensively with our economic development partners, we structured things the same way that you'll see this evening, and that is recovery, jobs, talent, entrepreneurship, and innovation. And I think it's important to note that, especially as we come, have come out of some of the direct response components of recovery from, from the COVID pandemic and the situations that that created from an economic standpoint at the local, regional, state, and national level, that as we've come out of some of that direct response components, it's even more important now that we, as Jason alluded to, drive economic growth. And so driving jobs through a variety of efforts that we'll review this evening through entrepreneurship, through innovation, and then ensuring that the people, that the talent are here in the, in the region to support that. And so, again, these strategies, as we've noted before, are, come from the Region Reimagined Plan, and so what we have done is structured those in a way here that, that most closely reflects how we are, how we are currently staffing and strategically how we're pursuing So from a recovery standpoint, highlight a couple of the things last year, again, I want to thank all of you for very early on in the pandemic, supporting the local emergency loan program that we were able to administer and provide support to 84 businesses totaling nearly $375,000 of funds that got into, into those businesses. Could not have done that without the quick turnaround and support of the city commission, so I know that happened more than a year ago now at this point, but again, overall positive response to that from the business community, and appreciate your willingness to move on that quickly. In addition to the activities we've talked about in the past, the CARES grants administration from the county level, I just want to point out that we continue from an outreach and technical assistance standpoint to promote opportunities, host educational events, we've done some success in 60 events, helping folks, as there's been additional rounds of PPP, of restaurant revitalization, of other federal, state, and federal programs, and will, as appropriate, continue to do those. And there may be things coming with ARPA funds that, that directly impact businesses where there may be opportunities for education, we'll continue to push those forward, as well as resources that are provided through the SBA and the SBDC. And so that's an important part of our role in the community there from a recovery standpoint, is to get that information quickly and efficiently into the hands of our businesses. From a jobs standpoint, business retention expansion truly is vital to any community, any community's economic development strategy. You heard the numbers about, about how many jobs come from existing businesses, and this is something we're really proud of the efforts that George has done, and I want to recognize George, who's in attendance this evening, for, for the continuous outreach that he does into the community. And so last year, during the course of the summer and early fall, obviously during some times when it was difficult to meet with folks, he did the outreach to 54 primary and major employers. And then, as we noted when we were here in December, this spring, we published a business conditions report in April, shared that with, with our investors, with the chamber, and also with a number of community groups and elected, elected bodies here around the region. The good news coming out of that report is that overall, there was a significant amount of positivity. There was, there was some optimism for the future. Despite the timing of that, again, we're talking primarily quarter three and four of 2020, there was positivity looking forward when it came to potential for growth, when it came to capital investment anticipated in the community, and I think that we should be very positive about the fact that, that these feelings existed. However, there are a number of items that were identified, particularly talent, housing, and childcare, that were brought up over and over and over again. And so part of our job as an economic development team is to take that information, take that data that's been collected, and now go out and directly address that. And so that's being done in a, in a number of different ways. Talent, we're going to focus very closely on later in tonight's presentation, so I'll leave that for that time. From a housing standpoint, obviously there's study going on at the city level. We also look forward to where the 10% of the, the half-cent sales tax and workforce housing, what that leads to, and believe that that can be an important component and an important tool in the future of our, our ability to, to attract jobs to this community. And then with childcare, this is an issue that the chamber has taken a look at and played a role in the past, but we are in the process of forming a new task force to, to look at that. George is leading up that effort as well, and has been very active over the course of the last couple of months, meeting with childcare providers, with resource providers around childcare, and a number of vested parties within the, within the region. We will continue to gather information on that and then bring an appropriate group together to, to move that conversation forward. Also want to highlight retention and expansion projects, and so there are a number of the potential expansion projects that show up on our project list, and we'll, we'll take a look at, at some numbers a little later on, but there's a number of those that show up that come directly out of George's efforts. So that has been, that has been a business retention expansion visit that has, has turned into a discussion about a future project, what resources might be able to come to the table from a local standpoint, maybe a state Department of Commerce standpoint, maybe there's a challenge on a particular project, whether that be at the local, regional, or state level. And the ability to get in there, better understand those early on, and work towards solutions is important. From an application standpoint, one of the reasons that becomes so important, I think, can be seen in the, in the relatively recent McCall's announcement. In that case, you've got a company that has made significant investment in other communities, maybe in other facilities. The hope would always be that our efforts are identifying opportunities for investment or challenges early along, early enough along in the process, that we are able to do everything possible to try to make those investments happen here in Manhattan. And so, again, that's one of the real key reasons why, why that effort is, is so important. The focus now this year and going forward in the near future is going to be on small businesses. And so just over the last few months, George has made visits to over 40 small businesses. Those can be seen in the monthly reports that we provide to the city, there's a list of those businesses, so you can kind of give an understanding of who we're talking to. But we'll continue to push forward on that and look forward to aggregating that data, data here later this year and being able to bring that forward, and helping drive some of the, the strategy and the decisions that are happening at that point. Next up, I'm going to talk a little bit about business attraction. There are, there are numerous things here at play. Jason touched on pipeline development and why that's so important. You have to have leads, you have to have prospects, and, and we are casting a very, while a very focused net on some, leveraging some specific strengths that we have here, including Kansas State University, animal health, biosecurity, grain and crop science, we are also casting a very broad net geographically. We are literally talking to companies from around the world, and I'm excited to share a little bit more about that. We're engaging with the Kansas Department of Commerce, we've seen great strides at Commerce, both from their in-state business development team, their business recruitment team that's located around the country, and their international team. We're seeing more leads from Commerce, we're working closely with Commerce, and that includes engaging in a number of, of visits with them, with site selectors and consultants and companies from around the country through Team Kansas. I mentioned leveraging K-State strengths, and then we're doing some really exciting things in our biosecurity marketing campaign, leveraging, again, the strengths of Kansas State, leveraging some of the animal health strengths in the animal health corridor from Columbia, Missouri to Manhattan, Kansas, and the timing of NBAF. Between the pandemic and NBAF, there's a lot of interest right now, there's a lot of eyeballs on Manhattan, and, and it's important that we leverage that. So, and then we'll touch on a couple of other efforts as we move forward. One of the things I want to highlight on the email marketing campaign was that we've started doing emails monthly to site selectors, commercial real estate consultants, to folks that are getting in there and doing the work with companies and seeking out communities and working projects. We continue to see growth in our reach. Our next step in that area is going to be focusing specifically in on some, on two things, one, specific industry segments, and we are, we have made the investment- One, specific industry segments and we have made the investment in the databases and the technology to be able to do that through the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. And then also focusing on high-growth companies. So if we know a company has opened a location someplace and they're anticipating opening three or four more over the next five years, they're getting information from, directed information from Manhattan, talking about available real estate, talking about success stories like Bev Hub, talking about opportunities that exist to do partnership with Kansas State University or development up along the edge with the foundation. So there's a number of things there that are great selling points that we're getting directly into folks' inboxes and we're starting to see some good uptick on eyeballs that are seeing those as well. From a business attraction standpoint, talking about pipeline, you can see we've grown, as Jason alluded to, to nearly 50 open projects. You see the breakdown there. I just want to note that the sources of these projects, well over half of them are coming from some type of internal source. So whether that's a business retention expansion visit that George is making, we've engaged in a very robust lead generation campaign through the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership, investing in that. So again, identifying targeted companies, both in the United States and internationally, that have been contacted and have expressed interest. And so then we've set up meetings with our economic development team, including our K-Bet, our Knowledge Based Economic Development Team and the folks at K-State, to meet with those folks primarily over Zoom and are turning those into active projects as we go. We also see that this very closely aligns to the, for the most part with what the state's seeing right now. And that's a lot of office, back office, food and manufacturing. We are excited to see that bio and agriculture and animal health are areas we're seeing a lot of prospects as well. That speaks to the strengths of Kansas State and the opportunities that exist here in this region. Highlight a couple of project details. There's a lot here, but I'm going to pull a couple of them out. These are all folks that we've had communication with just this year in addition to others. But these are all ones we're talking to just at this time. Again, these are project code names since the large majority of these would prefer to remain anonymous at this time because of the nature of the projects or the stage in the project that they may be in. Detonation is an international company with some Kansas State licensed, Kansas State University licensed technology. We actually had them in for a visit here within the last couple of months, looking specifically at real estate and building a future manufacturing facility here. And we look forward to hopefully being able to announce that project being official in the very near future, but very excited about the opportunities there. Speaks towards the value of multi-year relationships and engagements with Kansas State University and developing licensed technology and those sort of things. This doesn't happen quickly, but this is a very long-term engagement and very appreciative of the folks at Kansas State that have continued to build that engagement over a number of years. Project Yogurt's another international company in animal health. This is actually one that we're able to identify through some of the activities that have gone on with Plug and Play and Topeka. And they have made a visit, they've been able to have one of their folks that's stationed in the United States in California make a visit here to Manhattan again within the last couple of months and explore opportunities with ag producers, explore opportunities for research with K-State and get to better know the players in the market here, both from a regulatory standpoint at the state, but also in the private sector that would ultimately be their customers. Project Nova is an in-state expansion project, looking for the opportunity to be close to K-State. They hire a lot of K-Staters as is, look to be close to K-State and have that direct talent pipeline. They also came on a community visit and we look forward to future opportunity with them. And then I want to highlight Project Life, that's a bioscience company, a very large project, significant employer, very skilled, very educated and highly paid workforce. And so this is one that, being in this game, able to leverage both proximity to Fort Riley and a major research institution in Kansas State, as well as some real estate, potential real estate solutions for them and one that we hope to continue to make cuts and get onto a shortlist and get them here for a visit. But would really be an incredible project for Manhattan in the future. And then like I said, just want to note on the right-hand side there, as you look at it, the color-coded ones are the ones that came out of our lead generation engagement. So many of these have research components to them or ties to animal health or biosecurity. So we talk about all these projects, we talk about prospects, we talk about projects, we talk about getting them here for visits. And one of the key things then becomes where do we put them? And so sites and buildings has been, for those of you that attended the chamber annual dinner this year and heard Mark Bayshamp's talk there, you know that this is a very high priority for us and our leadership right now. It's also essential to being able to locate companies here from not only a business attraction standpoint, but also from a business expansion standpoint. And so we have submitted on the Manhattan Business Park Lot 12, which is the 16 acre lots, the largest lot out there. And it's really the largest industrial zoned shovel-ready site that we have in this community. But it is only 16 acres and many projects are looking for 30, 40 or 50 acres. But that site gets submitted very frequently. We do continue to, at the KEC building, promote and market the space that's available there. We just have a new single office tenant that came in a couple of months ago, National Resource Consultants. And then some improvements were made to lighting and security, especially around the east side of that building due to the nature of some of the work that's done there and the times that people are coming and going, want to improve that experience and make sure that everyone's safe and secure. So Business Park, KEC Building, then the one that we've been tackling over the course of the last several months, which is very important to our future, is Sites and Buildings Task Force. So we looked last year at the projects that came across from Kansas Department of Commerce and other sources and realized that 50% of those we could not respond to due to some type of site or building shortcoming in the community. We didn't have enough square footage in an industrial building. We didn't have enough acreage, maybe they were looking for a 30 or 40 acre greenfield site and we didn't have that. And so from that, we put together a group, Sites and Buildings Task Force, through our economic development efforts at the chamber to try to address that. And so that's taken the form ultimately of a couple of different things that I want to review tonight. One is the speculative building incentive program, which we hope to bring before all of you here in the relatively near future. That is going to be a program that hopefully we will utilize IRBs to reduce some of the holding costs if a group or an entity were to build a speculative building for industrial purposes. And then having that on the market, Bev Hub is a perfect example, which I'll talk about a little bit as well, but Bev Hub's a perfect example, having a building brought that company here. Without a building, that company probably is not currently located in Manhattan, doesn't make a $30 million investment in Manhattan and doesn't bring those jobs to Manhattan. So buildings are incredibly important on the industrial side of things. And then also industrial site development, and this is across the region, Potawatomi County and Riley County, looking towards the future, whether it be five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, where does future industrial development go? And then what can we do to streamline and move forward the few properties that right now are close to being shovel-ready or are available and talk to those developers or talk to those property owners to ensure that should a project come along, there's a way to make that solution work from a real estate standpoint. That's included conversations here at the city on specific projects. And I want to thank the, thank Ron and Jason and city department heads that have been parts of those conversations. Oftentimes they're done in looking very far out into the future and not always with a ton of information, but those are incredibly valuable to our processes, we're working with these companies and working on potentially developing industrial sites because we've got to have people on the same page. And when things move, they need to move relatively quickly. And then finally, Kansas Department of Commerce has some great opportunities for promotion through their site certification program. It will be moving forward with a number of sites in the region to get that certification at the state level and the benefits that come along with that. So thank you all for being at the Bev Hub ribbon cutting and grand opening here a couple of weeks ago. It was great to see that project come to fruition. It was great to be inside that facility, now had the opportunity to be in there as a Western Wireless Call Center, Tallgrass Brewing Company and now Bev Hub and just amazing to see what they are doing. Again, great to have the investment group behind that company, have a greater presence in Manhattan and we look forward to future growth. So I appreciate everything, the support for the local incentive package last fall and for all of you attending the ribbon cutting and open house. Also want to note that they were very complimentary, the representatives in the company that worked through that incentive package process were incredibly complimentary of city staff and of the commission for the thoughtful questions, but to city staff, they obviously have projects and businesses in a number of places around the Midwest and they said this was one of the best experiences they've had and made that clear not only last fall, but again at the ribbon cutting and grand opening. So I appreciate that from all of you because it is important that that is a reputation that we have. It increases the likelihood that future projects come here and we look forward with an increased pipeline. We look forward to more projects like Bev Hub in the future. We'll talk a little bit now about talent and Amber Wilhelm, who is our Talent Strategies Coordinator, who's also in attendance tonight, if Amber would wave. Amber, in just a minute, is going to come up, in fact, if you'd like to do that now, that might work. We've got some materials we'd like to share with you tonight and so she's going to bring those up. Amber has been incredibly active over the, since the beginning of the year. Over 30 colleges, universities she's done outreach to primarily virtually, but she is the person that is taking Manhattan job opportunities out to universities, college students, folks looking for internships, recent college graduates and promoting the heck out of Manhattan. Why Manhattan's a great place to start a career, why Manhattan's a great place to live, what job opportunities exist here. And so that process, while done mostly virtual in the spring, in the fall, we're going to transition into some virtual and some in-person. Looking forward to getting her out on the road across a multi-state region and promoting those opportunities. I think one of the big things that I would ask here for all of you is if you know of people and know of businesses that are looking to hire, especially looking to hire either veterans or recent college graduates or have internship opportunities, we would love to add those to our list when we're out promoting. And so all those folks have to do is contact Amber or get us in touch with them. We'll go out, get those promoted, whatever platform that university or that veteran fair is using online, we'll make sure those job opportunities or internship opportunities get on there and promote them. And so that all kicks off here for the fall and end of July, so just a couple of weeks away, not even two weeks away, 10 days away, with the K-State Part-Time Career Fair and that's a great opportunity again. If a business is, maybe they don't have time to go to career fairs, maybe they don't have time to get out of the shop or get out of the business or get out of the truck, we're here to help them with those efforts. And that's an incredibly valuable part of our talent retention that we're doing. And it's like I remind our staff over and over, when it comes to talent, attraction or retention, there's just no magic button. There's no easy button, it's literally getting someone out there and recruiting. And so we're very actively doing that and looking forward to only growing that. One of the great resources that we now have to do that is Made For Manhattan. And so the materials you have in front of you are from this Made For Manhattan campaign. This is actually something that we are going to officially kick off at the Leaders Retreat here at the end of July. And so you're getting a bit of a sneak peek at this. This is a program that's been developed in conjunction with HR professionals, in conjunction with business owners and with input of both of those groups as well as residents of Manhattan, particularly new residents of Manhattan. And something that we're really proud of and really excited to see where this goes. So ultimately, this is an online and there's supporting printed material resource for HR professionals, for companies that are hiring in the Manhattan area and for prospective residents and/or current residents who may be looking to stay here or are new residents. And so we want to get the online component of this in front of those folks. We want to get the printed materials in their hands and ultimately though, we want these to be a toolkit for folks that are doing hiring in the Manhattan area. So we're trying to help our businesses, help those professionals that are doing the hiring to be able to do what they do better. And so I'm going to share a little bit about the background on this. This development started with surveys, discussions with HR professionals and residents new to the area last year during COVID, identified some key issues, among those where you know, it's hard to know what's here if you're not from here or maybe if you're not able to visit here and you're looking here from the outside. That's probably more relevant to Manhattan than many places because we do have a lot of people that look at opportunities at K-State or they get sent here by the federal government or they're looking because of Fort Riley or NBAF or other reasons. And we want to make sure that we've got quality content that's getting in their hands. We found from those surveys that a lot of folks aren't necessarily sure about their long-term prospects in Manhattan. And so what can we do to ensure that a greater percentage of those people stay here long-term? And then finally, there was definitely consensus around a need for a centralized and accessible source of information, whether that was coming from residents or that was coming from employers, that we needed one place where people could go to find this information and one source that could be sent to them. So with that, we worked with a local marketing firm to develop a website. That website is www.madedformanhattan.org, that's live, I would encourage you to go visit it. It's on the printed material as well. Some components of that, there's information for folks that are new to Manhattan. You can sort and filter by any number of different things there. There's Manhattanite stories, we find there's no better way to tell this than by tell the story by people that are in Manhattan. Men have tos, things to do, neighborhood information, statistics, places to connect. There's a lot of information on there presented in a very attractive way. And I would encourage you, the one pager that you have, that just says the logo on the front and the back, talks a little bit about how companies or how residents or prospective residents might use Made For Manhattan. And so again, if this is something that you know, people hiring, you know folks that are looking at Manhattan as a place to land or the Manhattan region as a place to land, we would be more than happy to get these materials, more than happy to get these materials in front of them. So the supporting printed material, again, here's some examples of the website up on the screen. It is a very attractive website, some good background video going on as well. The printed materials in front of you, there is a relocation booklet, so begins this big and you can fold it out and it turns into really a beautiful piece that highlights various different components of Manhattan, has QR codes on it. So folks, obviously that became big again with, during COVID because of the hands-free components of going to restaurants and other places. So people are very used to now of just getting their phone camera out, get your phone camera out, that'll take you to different pieces of the website. A great piece that can be shared, Amber's going to be taking this on the road with her and using it as a promotional tool at colleges, universities and veteran career fairs. This fall, a great tool to use in any recruitment visit or interview process. And then something that we're really proud of is, are these Greetings From Manhattan cards. And so what this box is that you have, it is, if you open it up, you can see there's some information, a point of contact there, a place to connect in Amber. But then there's actual stories, there's testimonials, there's messages from folks and snapshots in there in postcard format from Manhattan. And so this is meant to be a tool, you know, this is a unique recruitment tool. It's something that is mailable. So if you look on the backside here, you see there's an address, this can actually, and of course that'll be sealed and everything, but this is something that the chamber can provide to companies. Let's say they're bringing in someone or they've been through an interview process and they're recruiting somebody and they really want to get them here and they want to do something that's personal and unique and kind of helps get them over that edge and get them comfortable with Manhattan. We can provide these, these can just be mailed directly, the postage is paid through the program and that can get out in the hands of that prospective employee. And so by developing something unique like this, again, we're proud of it, take the time to page through it. The hope would be this is something that helps someone immerse themselves, touch, see, understand a little bit more about our community, about and hear it from the folks that really can showcase Manhattan, that know the community and love the community. So again, we're excited about this program. We really feel like Made For Manhattan has come together to where not only does Amber have a great toolkit now when she goes out, but this is something that across the community, our folks that are hiring, as we know many people are right now, have some additional tools that they can work with. Let us know if you would like more of the materials, please. We'd be happy to follow up there as well. Young Professionals in our Hype Program is another way that we're actively engaging in recruiting and retaining talent. We've seen in communities that are effective at keeping young people, we're talking recent college graduates, we're talking folks that intern in the community, we're talking transitioning military service members and their families. The more connections we can make, the better. And so our young professionals through Hype are doing a great job of, I just went to an event at City Park across the street this weekend, took my daughter to it, met numerous other people, young families, single parents, but people with kids, people looking to engage, not all of them from here for a long period of time. So any of those kinds of opportunities where we can build those connections increases our chances of keeping those folks here down the road. Again, the numbers, the data that we collected last year showed us that there are a lot of folks that when you ask them if they're going to be in Manhattan in five years, they're not sure. So we need to make sure, especially amongst a certain demographic, we need to make sure we're getting those folks and through Hype, we're making good progress. So with that, we're going to switch gears a little bit over to entrepreneurship. We entered into an agreement with Spark last year to, for entrepreneurial ecosystem development. Again, just to highlight real quick what the components of that agreement were. They were to, for Hype to build organizational structure, centralized resources for entrepreneurs, connect entrepreneurs to resources, communicate local services and entrepreneurial successes, and then over time to identify, track and report metrics and put a system in place to do that. And so I think we're making very strong progress across this front. I'm going to introduce Sarah Siders, who is the Executive Director of Spark. She's going to come up and share a little bit more about some of the programs and the progress that they're making on these fronts. But just want to remind everybody why this is so incredibly important. As we look around this community, I know you've heard me say this before, but I will continue to say it. As we look around this community, how many of our major employers, how many of the real foundational cornerstone's of our community, not just large employers, but businesses that have been here for multiple generations, businesses that bring in lots of dollars from the outside and employ people in Manhattan, started as Local Entrepreneurial Ventures and grew. And so we need to do everything we can to identify the next generation of those and these And and these efforts through Spark are are really starting to ramp up that effort. So with that, Sarah, it's all yours.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Butler, Commissioner, City Staff for inviting me here to report on Spark's progress from the last year. It has been quite the year. As Darren said, I'm Sarah Siders, the Executive Director of Spark. And this past year was our first year in existence, which we we like to take as a little badge of honor because we think that entrepreneurs never waste a crisis. And so being an organization that supports entrepreneurs, we are excited to be able to have been in existence during this really critical year when there were some extraordinary challenges and opportunities for our area business owners that we were in our own way, starting out and finding our way and learning what it's like to be a new organization in this area. And so that gave us a unique opportunity and unique lens throughout the year. So I want to share a little bit about what we have been up to, specifically in line with the contract that we have with the Chamber and the City. So first off, you know, again, being in our first year, our goal was to build organization organizational structure and sustainability. We wanted to be able to be here for the long haul. So one of the first things that we did was make sure that we were building out a strong board of directors and representation from women and minorities as well as entrepreneurs and small business owners. We wanted to make sure that we had them present on our board. And so our board is comprised of two two folks who are here in attendance tonight, Kent Glasscock, Mary Veneer, and then also Derek Richards and LaFara Sarisby. And so Spark is very grateful for the leadership that they have provided to us, the wisdom, the guidance, the support all throughout the last year. It's been really critical and they have been extraordinary in providing that leadership. We've also done some really valuable research around the country at other entrepreneurship ecosystems, looking at comparable communities to Manhattan and seeing what are some of those best practices and key findings. And so some of the things that we learned were that public and private partnership in program development and fundraising is standard. So that having, you know, the city involved, having the county involved, and then having, you know, private investment combined together and those two, you know, forces kind of working together to support entrepreneurship has been really critical in communities across the nation. We also are seeing that small business programming, education, and support lays a critical foundation for innovation to build on. So we want to, in order to support all forms of business and all forms of companies, you lay that strong foundation of supporting small business and and then you're able to build, you know, infrastructure to support innovation on top of that. And also intentional diversity and inclusion efforts are critical to long-term sustainability. So it's very important that we look around and see if there's anyone who's underrepresented, making sure that their voice is included. Finally, in terms of organizational structure and sustainability, it was very important that we knew which direction we were going. How do we prioritize our efforts? And so through a facilitated process with University Economic Development Association, known as UEEDA for short, because you don't want to have to repeat that over and over, Spark and our partners engaged in a three-month process of, you know, going through, you know, interviews, one-on-one interviews, group conversations, and identifying what three priorities were. And those were inclusive resources, inclusive capital, inclusive talent. And we have been working throughout the process with a cross-cultural consultant to ensure that we're able to make use of the extraordinary resource here in this area of all the global talent that we have coming through, whether there's, you know, future employees or future employers in our area. We want to make sure that everyone is included. And so that cross-cultural consultant has been a part of all of our key decisions and continues to be. Our second goal was centralizing resources for entrepreneurs. And again, as you can see from our strategy development, resources was the number one priority. And so we got right to work doing that, and we have been working with a company called Startup Space, which builds digital platforms that create 24/7 accessible events, resources, even storytelling mentorship, and ultimately, it provides a CRM tool to track the economic development impact through entrepreneurship. This company works across the country with regions and cities and entire states in some cases. And so we are very fortunate to be able to bring Startup Space to our region. We are the only city in our state so far that has brought Startup Space here. But we have, you know, states like Minnesota and Nevada that are working with them, and they are about three years old themselves. So they are a startup that was actually created with with the idea in mind of aggregating resources and and events for small business owners and highlighting and promoting diversity efforts. So we launched in May, as it says, and and I'll get to some of those those details. And I want to make sure that we understand everything that this this hub has, you know, is is capable of doing because, again, it's 24/7 accessible. And we think that's really important because a lot of entrepreneurs are starting businesses on the side. And and that means they're working at like weird hours, right? You can't, you can't necessarily have a meeting with the SBDC at one in the morning. Or if you get a really good idea, you know, in the middle of the night, what are you supposed to do? Where where can you go? And so having a 24/7 accessible resource hub on Spark's website, it's it's kind of has a digital backend. It's embedded into our website, and then there's a dashboard that that you can access as well. That means that that no matter what time of day you are doing your entrepreneurial effort, Spark is there to support you. So so far, we have, when I wrote this initial report, we had just under 120 users. And even in the last week, we've added nearly 10. So we have almost 130 users since our launch just over two months ago. We have a growing number of resources and service providers, programs, and organizations throughout the region that support entrepreneurs. And that number is at 50. I think it's just over that now. And we have 200 events that are listed there. That's a that's a renewing listing of events. So obviously, an event occurs and then, you know, sometimes they're they're recurring. But for the most part, we're just listing off, you know, Small Business Development Center events or things that happen with our our area chambers in Junction City or in Manhattan here. Also, anything that's that Spark is doing, so just area business and entrepreneurship-focused events are listed there on our website for people to search. And you can search for your resources based on your industry, based on the business stage, and based on the business type. So you can really narrow in on exactly what it is that you need. So the future opportunity here for the hub, right now, you might say, hey, 130 people, you know, good job, I guess. I don't know. But we are really proud of this one because we just launched it and it is a growing number on a weekly basis. But two, the more people that we're adding into this hub, the the greater value it has for the resources, the service providers like lenders or insurance agents or, you know, real estate agents. We have marketing agencies in there. People who say, hey, I serve entrepreneurs and and I want to connect with this entrepreneurship community. It allows people to list themselves in this hub and to connect themselves directly and say, I serve entrepreneurs or I am an entrepreneur or I am an investor or I am a mentor. They can self-identify in that way. And one of the greatest values is the CRM tool. So as people are, you know, signing in with their name in their email, they can build a profile. And again, they can identify in the role that they want to interact within the entrepreneurship community. But every time that they RSVP for an event or when they meet with a business advisor or mentor, all of that is tracked. So we're able to track, you know, those business advising hours, who's attending events. We're able to to track even with business advising, some of the economic impact, you know, job growth and economic impact as as businesses, you know, continue to increase their revenue. So the CRM tool is one of the greatest benefits, but it's all happening on the backend. So, you know, as people are interacting with with the benefits or the resources, they're not necessarily aware that there's all this this tracking going on. But it's just part of like, you know, the dashboard, the capabilities of the dashboard. We're very grateful for that and very excited about it. And again, as this hub continues to grow, the more people that are on there, the more events that are on there, the more resources that are on there, the more value it has. I have seen some of your names come through as you, some of you have signed up recently for an event or perhaps signed up on the hub. So thank you for doing that. Really appreciate your support. I want to move on here to our our next goal, connecting entrepreneurs to resources. So building the hub matters, but connecting entrepreneurs to the hub and then to resources and programs has been really important for us. So we came in and there was already entrepreneurship programming in existence here in Manhattan. So we wanted to make sure that we got behind that and supported it, promoted it, and also, you know, followed up with anybody who was participating. So with One Million Cups, Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge, and Startup MHK, Spark is in there following up with participants or presenters who are engaging with those programs. Through One Million Cups this last year, we've been able to serve over 80 businesses. As we started meeting weekly during the pandemic around the country, One Million Cups chapters were sometimes closing or even going to once a month. And we went to weekly because we are hardcore. Our entrepreneurship community is very committed. And I think you should be very proud of us for that, for for all for our community. There was eight pitch participants in Startup MHK, and so Spark got to work following up with them and offering them support, referrals, and just letting them know that Spark is here to support them. And the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge is a high school-based pitch competition. And so we had over 20 students pitching businesses and we were able to award $1,500 to them. We had some really, really great business ideas, and we'll be expanding the curriculum offerings at the high school this year as well as expanding a program within the elementary school for pitch competition as well. So we are taking youth entrepreneurship seriously. We want to grow up a next generation of entrepreneurs. It was important to us to fill gaps that were identified as we were doing our initial mapping of the ecosystem and saying, hey, we've we've got some incredible resources and programs here, but what is missing? And so we have committed to creating new programs and filling those gaps with collaborative efforts. So Spark doesn't ever do anything on our own. We are not, you know, an island. We are here connecting organizations, programs, and people. And then we, you know, link arms and collaborate to create new programs every time. One of the things that we have brought here to our region for the first time is core entrepreneurship education. So you might have heard of the Kaufman Foundation in Kansas City. They have a nationally recognized program called Fast Track. And there are multiple iterations of Fast Track. There's kind of the core accelerated eight-week program that we'll be bringing here to the area in the fall. But we are currently running a version of Fast Track that was designed with entrepreneurs of color in mind. It's called Entrepreneur Business Basics. And we currently have 16 area businesses going through that program right now as we speak. They meet on Thursday evenings. And so that's been really exciting to bring both of those to the area for the first time. We have never had entrepreneurship education in that way before. Also, Women in Entrepreneurship is a program that we launched in January of 2021. And I have to give Mary Veneer our our board member props because it was just a conversation in a Facebook thread that someone said, hey, is there anything going on for women in entrepreneurship? And here we have this program that meets on Third Thursdays. We do educational happy hour is what we call it. So 5:00 PM on Third Thursday, we get together and, you know, learn about a new topic. This month, we'll be talking about mental health and entrepreneurship. So that's exciting. We've also been able to build relationships with lenders in the area to help them kind of see the spectrum of financial opportunities for entrepreneurs and to understand and see Spark as a resource for the business owners with whom they're interacting. So just to give you a few numbers, and we'll get to this in a minute. But we have been able to host two events in partnership with the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills. We have hosted six Women in Entrepreneurship events, some virtual, some in person, two capital workshops, three entrepreneurship 101 workshops, two pitch competitions, and weekly One Million Cups meetings since May of 2020. And that's just a little glance of what our entrepreneurship ecosystem, not just Spark by itself, but what our ecosystem has been up to. A few of the key connections that Spark has been making, which I think are really valuable. Again, we're not creating anything. We're we're partnering together to bring new or existing, you know, programs to the forefront. And so something that's been really strategic for us in building minority business programming is a partnership with the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, sponsored by Kansas Gas Service. So our partnership is sponsored by Kansas Gas, which has been really exciting. They have sponsored the organization of the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills to have a membership at the Fellow Coworking where Spark lives. And so we have, they have access to the event space, the conference rooms, and a dedicated desk. And through that partnership, we were able to bring Entrepreneur Business Basics to the area because we realized some shared goals for creating inclusive education, programming, capital opportunities, and awareness. And so we see this as a strategic partnership because we are expanding opportunities for all entrepreneurs of color in our area. Whatever we're doing for the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills is accessible to all entrepreneurs of color. And so this is a really important opportunity for us. We've also been collaborating with the Small Business Development Center in a How to Start a Business series. We've been working with K-State to help their Center for Advancement of Entrepreneurship locate interns for our our companies to place some of their interns in so that we were strategic in in helping them find businesses to collaborate with. And we also worked on a grant application towards the end of the year, and we were all so new and there was so much going on. So we didn't actually get past the first, you know, the first stage of approval with the grant application. But what we did was we had three different projects that we decided we were going to work on together and we, that we submitted to the grant, and two of those we decided to just keep, you know, go ahead with anyway because we knew they were good ideas. And so they've just been an extraordinary collaborator. As well, I mentioned with, you know, Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge, we're expanding youth entrepreneurship efforts here as well. So that was an existing program that got expanded immediately once Spark got involved. And then again, this fall, we'll continue to expand with curriculum offerings at the high school. So finally, commuting, communicating local resources and successes, beginning to tell the story that Manhattan and our Manhattan area is a great place to start and grow your business. And so Spark has a unique role in that. We have many different outlets for promoting the work that goes on here. We've been, you know, obviously doing events virtually or in person. We've been doing some radio interviews, hosting some some events that are Spark-specific, like our launch event and our birthday party that'll be coming up here next week. We we do, you know, we'll drive around and drop off flyers and marketing material, just letting people know that we're here and that there's an organization dedicated to new business and entrepreneurship here in the region. We've been able to feature 34 business stories so far, featuring veterans, women, black and Latinx-owned businesses, among others. And in honor of our birthday this year, because we started in a pandemic, we are featuring businesses that started in a pandemic in the last in the last year. And so you'll start to see some of those business features coming out on our social media. And I would like to extend an invitation to you and to our community to attend our one-year celebration on Friday, July 23rd. At the Fellow Coworking, we'll be out in the parking lot. We're going to have some area vendors and young business owners who are going to be, you know, there with their food. And it's just going to be a really lively, fun atmosphere, celebrating the accomplishments of our entrepreneurial ecosystem over the last year and, you know, letting you know more about what is to come. So speaking of what's to come, I'm going to give Darren the floor, and we're going to talk about innovation and next steps for entrepreneurship in the region. Thank you. Well, I have these slides that I that I made, and Darren's reminding me that I took so much time, and so I should show you them. So I apologize. I forgot about these. So again, these are at a glance. I did share some of this with you just now. But at the time when I made this, 120 entrepreneurs in in our member directory now, almost 130, over 50 resources and service providers, and 200 workshops and events that are ongoing. Over the last year, we our ecosystem has awarded $21,500 to new and upcoming entrepreneurs through two local pitch competitions. We had eight pitch participants in Startup MHK and 22 at the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge. So just a few numbers in terms of engagement here locally. There are 69 business owner members of the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills that we are engaging with. There's even a larger number that's in the Facebook group. These are the ones listed in the directory. There are, as of the this, you know, when I put this together, 17 Greater Manhattan Area Minority-Owned Small Businesses that are participating in our first-ever Entrepreneurs Business Basics cohort. There are 151 women who are active in the Women in Entrepreneurship group on Facebook. And following the events in Atlanta and the highlighted, you know, mistreatment around the country of AAPI individuals that are that are part of all of our communities, Spark made a strategic effort to reach out to some of our retail and business owners who are Asian-American Pacific Islander to provide them with, you know, a card and some, you know, of active appreciation, pay a personal visit, and let them know that we are thankful that they are growing their business here in Manhattan. So again, existing entrepreneurship collaborations or programming that existed, we had five of those. And throughout the last year, we've introduced four new entrepreneurship programs to the area. We've identified 20 key partners and stakeholders that we are working with on an ongoing basis. And I I did make a little bit of a typo there in the $10,000 contributed by Spark. It's actually It's actually closer to thirteen thousand. So that's, that's good, right? You want, you want your numbers to be too low, not too high? So yes, nearly thirteen thousand dollars has been contributed through our partners for entrepreneurship education programming. And we have been receiving sponsorships of seventy-five hundred dollars so far from corporate sponsors. And that number will be increasing. So that's just the quick at a glance of what we've been up to. And you do have just a few photos to say, hey, we actually did a few things in person. We're, we're all tired of pictures of, you know, Zoom meetings that everybody was here. You know, here's, here are all the Zooms. So we, we had some in-person events that we are very proud of. So you can see the Black Entrepreneur and Spark Open House that we had in March, recent One Million Cups meeting, one from June, and then one from right before the pandemic there, our Spark Launch Event in September of 2020. And then you can see our Youth Entrepreneurship and Startup MHK, the pitch competitions that we had there in the upper right. So there's just some moments from our ecosystem to, to demonstrate that we've been active and we have a lot to look forward to in the future. So I'll let Darren speak to that.
Thanks, Sarah. And speaking of the future, we are excited about where we're headed on the entrepreneurial front. There is a lot of opportunity that exists. I think as we look at, get this to the right slide. As we look at the future, a lot of this is about building upon the things Sarah's been talking about. But I want to highlight a couple of things. One, she alluded to some of the educational, entrepreneurial educational courses and, and things that we're doing. We are really looking closely at what other communities do, especially university communities. And how can we bring high-value programming? That may be for innovation-specific businesses. There are some really strong things going on at the SBDC to serve innovation and in technology businesses that, that we will continue to leverage. And we don't have to look far, look, look to the east at Topeka and some of the recent investments that they've made, you know, almost six million dollars here for an innovation campus through their economic development efforts to, to, to drive a thirteen million dollar project forward in downtown Topeka. Some of the small business programs there, look to Salina. They've got a strong new program that, that gets grant money, public dollars in, in the form of grants into small businesses' hands. There are some really strong and aggressive efforts going on within our region when it comes to entrepreneurship. And, and I think it's important that we think then about what opportunities exist in Manhattan and, and how can we take advantage of those? How can we leverage our strengths going forward? And, you know, the reality is, is that we've got a pretty significant area around, around campus and around the university that's, that's part of federal opportunity zones. There's some things that are available there from a tax credit standpoint that may be able to do some additional development. And so as you can see by, by one of the bullet points there on the screen, Spark has been very involved, as have we at the Chamber, on supporting an entrepreneurial facility task force. So the Chamber hired a consultant and, and that has done a lot of work working in economic development. In fact, it's the consultant that worked directly with the Kansas Department of Commerce on, on wrapping up some of their Framework for Growth efforts and, and have brought him in on this and are working together with a local group, a task force that's been formed that includes resource providers, includes elected officials, includes entrepreneurs, to take a look at what's appropriate and what opportunities might exist for, for a facility that could drive entrepreneurship in Aggieville, taking advantage of some of these, some of these tools, these economic development tools and community development tools that are available. And so that process is well underway. And we look to be wrapping that up here over the course of the next month and look forward to not only the results, but those conversations that will result then as we discuss opportunities in the future to, to provide resources, provide assets that can help drive our entrepreneurial community forward. So ultimately, that's all part of building this ecosystem. Sarah mentioned a lot of individual things. There, there is no shortage of opportunity to engage. And so I would encourage anyone that, anyone that is involved in an early-stage business to reach out. We can, we can help them through Spark, get connected to resources. And one of the best resources that we have, that we also directly support at the Chamber, is the Washburn University Small Business Development Center. And so the SBDC has actually housed their office down at the Chamber. We, we provide them with that space as well as some financial support. They have recently added to their repertoire of, of resources, the Bright Center, which is, which is specific to innovation, technology, and exporting. We've been actively promoting their events through our Chamber channels as Spark does through their, through the hub that Sarah talked about. And so I just wanted to highlight the SBDC because I think sometimes it can be one of the best-kept secrets in town, the fact that, and Lori Piper, who, who was here for a period of time with the SBDC, left for a short time, went to Iowa, actually as the Assistant State Director, and then came back, is a great resource. And I would encourage anybody that, in the community that has an interest in starting a business or growing a business to, to reach out. There are resources available through that hub with Spark to help connect to those resources. And we, we really are proud to support, support the SBDC and the great work that they're doing. Speaking of innovation, innovation, in addition to entrepreneurship, obviously is one of our key strategies. This community is uniquely positioned there, especially because of the university, because of, because of NBAF. But there are some great things going on. And I think it's important that we recognize those. As, as the, as the Chamber, we're not trying to take, take ownership of these, but are, I want to, you know, that we're actively engaged and, and participating in a number of different partnerships or, or projects. Thinking just in, just up at the edge, Collaboration District on the north side of campus and the work that the K-State Foundation's doing there, whether it be private sector companies in eighteen eighty, the Kansas Department of Agriculture and KDA Labs, the, the recent groundbreaking on the Stormont Bay Medical Complex up there, over seventy-five thousand, nearly eighty thousand square feet that just broke ground. You know, one of the things identified and RegenReimagined and, and, and some of the follow-up there was a need, not just for medical facilities, but medical professionals in our area. And so that kind of development's going to, going to add to the number of medical professionals in the area. And just that proximity to campus and to NBAF and the opportunity that exists for future growth. Again, we talked to a lot of companies that see, when they're talking to us, they're talking to us because there's connectivity to K-State or there's connectivity to research in animal health that's going on. And, and that proximity and there on the edge is going to be very important going forward. Also, our Knowledge-Based Economic Development Partnership with, with a number of regional economic development partners, Kansas State Innovation Partners, the Foundation, and Kansas State University. Some of the activities over the course of this year, again, still doing a lot of virtual activities and industry engagement via Zoom, conferences online. But they've been very active, a big piece of growing our pipeline, especially with innovation companies, including two of the company visits I just referenced recently, our K-Bed projects. So again, these are projects that grew out of Kansas State University. And ultimately, we're likely to have a physical location and new jobs and new investment in the community because of it. Very active, working with our K-Bed partners on proposal development. Again, bringing together those assets. If we're putting a proposal together for a company or for the Kansas Department of Commerce on a project, we're engaging closely with those partners, and they play an incredibly valuable role and, and help us sell this community in this area to, to prospective companies. And then also involved with Spark and, and have been very, and I've been very thankful to the Spark Board and to Sarah for allowing that engagement with our existing economic development folks in the community and has been very open to working together. And additional opportunities exist there as well. We've, we've talked to and hosted the folks from Topeka and plug-and-play here in the community and at K-State. There are, there are regional opportunities for engagement. Again, K-State and the university and the partnerships in economic development that exist there are very important and something that we will continue to leverage into the future. So our specific, and that kind of wraps up our overview of activity on the economic development side. Before you can see our, our budget request, again, this is in line with the, with two years ago. We had some funds that year that, that were, that rolled over into last year. So our actual request last year was a little bit less than this. But the, there is no change in the overall budget request. The items that are in italics there are, are the ones that were new in the December 2019 request for the additional economic development funding. There was a question last year about, about showing, showing those and, and what came from, came from the previous agreement versus what was part of the new, the new funds that were approved at the end of 2019. That amount there, again, entrepreneurial services to Spark. The, we, we pay for two of our staff positions out of the, out of the City Economic Development Fund budget request. You heard a lot tonight about talent attraction, workforce development, and job fairs. That is a very labor-intensive, very active effort and, and the funding to support that. We continue with the Knowledge-Based Economic Development Partnership with Kansas State and, and Economic Development Partners there. Some of our continuing business park promotion as well as research and industrial park planning. So I think I want to quickly note that as part of that overall sites and buildings effort that I talked about earlier, it is going to be very important that we're able to come out the other end of that process with some plans and, and some assets for future development. The, the parks that we have in place here, both in Manhattan and also when we look into Potawatomi County, were, were planned multiple decades ago. And it's important that we plan for the future and we plan for it now. So that was part of the, part of the additional ask two years ago. And then we'll continue very aggressively through Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership and the work that we do to market and promote the community to businesses that exist outside the community that we'd like to bring here. So, and the last piece is military relations. I will not steal Janet's thunder on that, but I would be happy to answer any questions at this time related to the, the economic development activities that we've reviewed.
Yeah. This is Commissioner Reddy. I do have a few questions. I, I think, you know, in the past several years, this was typically about a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. That was usually the, I, I believe that was how much, maybe it was a little less. I don't remember the ask. And we increased it a couple of years ago based on the extended scope of services. And, and at that time, maybe it was a year before that in 2018 or maybe middle of 2019, the request was for five years. And it was denied because the metrics weren't there. So then we approved it based on the scope of services and metrics. So I think, I think Sarah did an excellent job of showing metrics. And I think that would be very effective to go back to the scope of services that was presented and maybe give a response to each of where you are, where are the trends? Like where were you in 2019? Where are you now? Some of them just say ongoing. What does ongoing mean? Are we like ten percent there, twenty percent there, fifty percent there? So I don't know what the return has been on that investment. With Sarah's, I can clearly tell because they came from nothing and now they're something. And there is numbers and data there to show that. And I think that's, that needs to be presented more effectively. I think everything you said is excellent, but it's stuff I've heard for, for many years. And I'm not saying it's, it's wrong, but it's, it's kind of the way we've been leading because we do believe in all of those things. We do believe in all of these partnerships and goals and NBAF and the Animal Health Corridor and K-Bed and all of that. We bought into that. But where are we now with that? What does that mean as far as jobs? Or if you say, you know, we are able to retain, how many are we retaining? Or how many K-State students is it? Five, ten, zero? How many are we keeping from the job fairs? And how do you keep track of that? Because if we don't see those trends, we don't know if it's a good investment or if we need to do something different. So I, I think that's where I would caution in presenting and I, as a teacher, I've always had to benchmark everything when presenting it to parents. So I would like to see that, this being referenced because this is the document I'm using as a guide to see if it is a good return on investment. And in two thousand, I'm sorry, in 2023, if some of those sales tax funds are going to go to the Chamber for use, that needs to be tracked. And, and it's our responsibility to track it. So I have a lot of confidence in what the Chamber does. And I do believe we need to invest in it. But what I do need is a little bit more meat. I need a little bit more numbers, a little bit more trend where we are. And if we're not making, if we're not tracking, if we're not, if we're absolutely doing nothing in one area, then we need to know why. Maybe we need to throw that benchmark out. Maybe it was unattainable to begin with. The two job placements that we have between you and George, I would like to think we were replaced by two other counterparts in, that were there preceding you. But I don't know if they did something different or if you're doing something different than they did. So I just need a little bit more of that information as we move forward to see where we are within the document that I keep referencing in my head for, for, like I said, trend lines. And that's what we hold our city staff accountable for, to show trend lines. RCPD held to the same standards as far as trend lines. So I just want to see a little bit more of that. But I do think, like I said, what we are doing, what we have, we have a lot of gems in our community. And I want to make sure, our goal, of course, is to keep our K-State students. And how are we doing that? Are they still leaving? We used to, you know, you referenced, I think Jason referenced, 2012. Are we still stagnant? I don't know where we are. It's 2021. Where are we now? So that, that's kind of what I want to, I guess, let you know as far as when I look at these things. So thank you.
Yep, thank you. And I think the, a couple of items there, just for clarification. One, the, the positions that were funded through the additional request in, at the end of 2019 were the director position and then the talent coordinator position. So that talent coordinator position, what Amber's doing is something that's new to us. And so that is a new program that, that started from scratch. While not funded through the, funded through the, the city request, the efforts that George is doing as far as that program is entailed was created when George, that program as it, as it exists now in a, in a traditional business retention and expansion sense was created when George came on as well. So I think that that speaks to, speaks to taking on some new things and building some programming that is, is very valuable from an economic development standpoint and very valuable to our community. So just again, point of clarification on that. I think on the, on the, on the numbers reporting piece and specifically to the expanded services, we do, and I, you mentioned some specific numbers there and/or something beyond the ongoing piece, that will be in our annual report that we'll be here in December for. And, and that's been in that agreement when we report annually. So job numbers, investment, the economic indicators. And then we can continue to pull together information, especially as some of these programs are, are coming up just on the, have just completed their first year, some benchmark numbers from that point forward or from that starting point to now that can be included in that.
I think that, I think that would be helpful. But I would like you to reference these action plan items. These were the action plan items. And, and if we're not going to follow it, then I just need to know that so I don't keep harping on it.
And they, and they are all part of the, they are all part of the program. So if, if that's something that we need to present in a different way, we can, we can talk about doing that. But there, there's definitely, there are not things in that document and that expanded services that are, that are left by the wayside or not being addressed. That's all part of the program we reviewed tonight. This is presented in those five strategic pillars that we've, we've established or established last year along with our other economic development partners. But we can definitely talk about ways to present that to more specifically include the, the bullet points that were in that expanded services agreement.
Our community, I would say, a couple of years ago, really bought into RegenReimagined. Is it, does it still exist? Or is it just integrated into other, this, the other programs that you have now?
Yep, so RegenReimagine is a plan. What you're looking at tonight from an economic development standpoint came out of RegenReimagine. And so the Manhattan Project and then, and then what became RegenReimagine and the Manhattan-specific pieces of that are our strategy. And we have had conversations, obviously, as, as staffing has changed and as, as there's other regional components to that, conversations about do some pieces of that live better elsewhere or better administered elsewhere? And we'll continue to have those conversations because those efforts are important. And obviously, regionalism is a big part of what we do. We do, do all of our business attraction efforts in conjunction with Potawatomi County Economic Development through the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. And I didn't talk a lot about that tonight. But I mean, incredibly valuable partnership and something that we realize we're stronger together as a region there than we are as individual communities or, or individual counties. And so from that standpoint, I, I think it's fair to say that what you're seeing tonight and, and what we report and what fills out those goals within our strategies, that is all information that's coming from RegenReimagine. Have we edited or updated some of that due to the pandemic or due to other factors? Absolutely. We have to be agile and adaptable in economic development. But, but RegenReimagine is ultimately the basis for all of our economic development strategy.
I'm guessing we're going to get to the military after. But I wanted to just, I've noticed that I think the development of, of Spark as a kind of another leg in the stool of what we're trying to do in development here has been fun to watch. It's been, I, I think even... even, there's been people that have certainly been skeptical. I think that's kind of how entrepreneurship works. There's a lot of people that say things might not work. And to see it grow and to see the diversity that's been brought in and some of the people that have been engaged, and to have the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills engaged in a way that's meaningful with that partnership with Kansas Gas, all of that in the midst of a pandemic, is pretty exciting. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think the most encouraging thing here, we're talking about metrics, is your 47 open projects. And I would think if we can bring some of those here, you know, that's the number one metric. I mean, Bev Hub was, you know, that's a good plus that we got that building occupied. But for me, this is, this is the major one that'll make, you know, a difference. And then, and then the other initiative there on trying to expand a business park, get a bigger business park, get some buildings to bring these folks in here would work. The only one that, you know, maybe is not measured well is, would be, you have job fairs and things, but are you actually bringing in people? And I say that because I, you know, I've got a couple of friends over there at Florence, and I referred them. And they had like 40 job openings and, you know, they did not have a lot of praise for the results. And I don't know, you know, why that is, you know, that we can't, we can't get people in there for it, but I don't know if there's other businesses in town like that. So that may be a tough one to measure. It may just be the factor of the economy and the federal government giving away lots of money and nobody wants to take the jobs. I don't know. But that'd be one that I'd be interested in seeing some more details on, like, you know, how many businesses have come to you and said, hey, can you help us with this? And are you actually helping them get results? Or is it panning out to be, you know, not worth the effort?
Yeah, a couple of things there that I'd like to reference. One is that we have heard loud and clear through George's efforts and every day that obviously there are challenges that exist right now when it comes to hiring. And so the company you referenced, as well as other companies in the region that are doing, doing similar things or hiring similar types of jobs, are all, are all facing challenges right now. We have heard that. I think that one of, as we continue to grow our program, obviously going to a career fair with soon-to-be college graduates or college juniors looking for internship opportunities, does not always align directly with, does not always align directly with some of the job opportunities that we have in the community. So we see that and we understand that. And Amber's actively working now, reaching out to community colleges, reaching out to technical schools, talking to folks that are pipelines of, or education pipelines that may more closely align with some of those needs that we have in this community. Because you're right, there's a lot of folks in manufacturing, fabrication, welding that desperately need people right now and are, have challenges finding them. And so as that program continues to grow, we're very aware of that and will continue to address that. We'll also be launching a jobs page through the Chamber website here this month. And so this is not a jobs listing page. We're not going to go recreate what Kansas Works is doing or what other entities are doing. But it's going to be a page where we're going to be able to provide the opportunity for local businesses in the region to have their logo, have a direct link to wherever they post jobs, whether that be on Indeed or whether that be internally. And then we'll support that from the Chamber as part of these efforts here. You know, when you look at talent attraction, workforce development on those line items, which, can't see because there's something on top of it. As you look at those line items, that effort then is being supported by a robust marketing campaign to help drive some of those eyes out there. So that if you've got folks that are looking for those kinds of jobs, they're going to see Manhattan opportunities popping up on their computer screen or on their phone and be able to click through and see what those are. So, but yes, that message is heard and we definitely, definitely understand that there is a wide variety of businesses and types of jobs in this community that need hired and that they're not all just soon-to-be college graduates. And so we'll continue to work to address that.
And I, you know, I think the investment and the economic development effort is really the way out of the dilemma. Beginning of the meeting, we talked about budget issues. And the only way out of that is to, is to grow the business community, bring in more business, and get more people here with decent salaries that spend money so we can collect sales taxes and we can get out of this, you know, flat thing. So I'm absolutely convinced we got to continue this investment if we're going to move on from where we currently are in the budget problem.
Thank you.
Darren, I, this is going to segue potentially unless people have other comments. But my, this idea that, about veterans, right? And retaining them, holding them in this area seems to kind of get a little bit overlooked. I don't know, I don't know why, but it does. And we focus on how do we keep the students here? But I've heard more this year from the Chamber and from others, that maybe it's not so much of keeping the students here, but getting the students to come back after they've established some of their career base and keeping the veterans here. And that, that is a significant number. You talked about 7,000 soldiers being redirected over the last decade or so. But every, I mean, we can, Janet can pull the numbers pretty easy. The, every, every, Fort Riley has forecasts, 18 to 24-year-olds that are going to be ETS-ing or leaving or, you know, others that are retiring out. And it's a, that's a big number, too. And they're going all over and they have a lot of skills and they certainly might want to stay here. And so that is a, that is an important number for me to see what we're retaining when it comes to veterans and their families.
And the good news is, what's been shared with us is that number is going up. Some of the numbers from Kansas Works that they, that they share with us show over the last couple of years that that number is increasing. We're also very actively promoting, and this is actually a great selling point, when we're doing proposals and we're working on business attraction. The fact that there are programs that exist, like the Career Skills Program, where a transitioning military member, and it's geared specifically towards ones 20, age 24 and younger, although not exclusively, but that's where the target is, can have an opportunity to go work for a company or do a, do an internship or do on-the-job training on the federal government's dime during that six-month transition window. And so we actively share that opportunity with companies that come to us, that we're talking to, looking for employees, and also promote that as a great way to access talent and basically have it at your front doorstep to companies that might be interested in being here. But yeah, I'll let Janet talk some more to it, but she is, and I commend both her and Amber. They have been working together incredibly well and making sure that our talent efforts and these resources that you've seen tonight, as well as others, are getting distributed to transitioning military members and their families as well. So it's not just, it's not just promotion or attraction elsewhere. They're getting resources. Yep. Questions?
These are, these are very cool.
Thank you. Yep. All right. Well, I appreciate it. Again, we'd be happy to share any of the materials or answer questions anytime. I was happy to visit about economic development. And with that, I will hand it over to Janet Nichols, our military community liaison, and I'll switch the PowerPoint.
Good evening, everyone. Interestingly enough, I happen to have a Fort Riley Economic Impact Survey on me. And while they don't do year-to-year comparisons in this book, I do, I have heard the presentation from Ben Van Beesler and Kelly Pascal at the Plans and Analysis Office that compiles this. And I do know that there was an uptick in veterans staying in the area from 2019 to 2020. So I don't remember the exact number, but I, in their presentations, that has happened. So, so anyway, I guess let's get started. First of all, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to present to you this evening. And again, to be your representative to Fort Riley and to help represent Fort Riley here in Manhattan. I'm starting this, this evening with Economic Impact, which is why I brought the Economic Impact Survey. It's a listing of the direct impact in billions of dollars and the populations represented by the connection that Manhattan has to Fort Riley. They break down the impact into categories of payroll, service and supply contracts, construction, veteran expenditures, education and federal impact aid, and healthcare. And, you know, it's released by Fort Riley in their annual survey. We usually release it in January at the Leaders Retreat. It came out. But this is last year's, the most recent, and they compile it along the fiscal year, so it's through the end of September every year. And this slide is really a lot of numbers. And it can be a challenge communicating and translating the billions of dollars of impact that Fort Riley has on the region in Manhattan and bring it to really kind of bite-sized pieces that you can eat. But a few months ago, a member of our Chamber's volunteer leadership said it best at our annual investors' update breakfast. He mentioned that he just happened to take his wife out to dinner for her birthday, the evening that the commanding general of Fort Riley listed, lifted, excuse me, the in-person ban on dining at area restaurants. And if anybody had been out to dinner around that time before that ban was listed, there was no wait ever at a restaurant in Manhattan. Well, he said that he and his wife waited for a table on her birthday for two hours that night. And if you've been out and about since then, it's a lot busier in our area restaurants. And a lot of that has to do with that restaurant ban being listed, lifted. And I think that's a really great kind of example of how that hits Manhattan's Main Street. It's a really visible, easy, tangible way to see that. I'm going to go ahead and start talking about our Manhattan MRC lunches, the first Wednesday of the month, 10 months of the year. I've listed some of the people we had come and be guest speaker at our lunches in the past year. During the past year, when possible, we had our MRC lunches in person, always following Fort Riley's mandated COVID-19 mitigation protocols, which are, were admittedly more stringent than those put in place by Riley County Health Department and the City of Manhattan. And we are proud to say that this year, beginning in March, all MRC lunches have been in person. Despite the pandemic, Manhattan MRC Lunch hosted a wide variety, high-profile speakers, including the picture up there of Senator Jerry Moran. Also, commanding general DA Sims was also one of our speakers in the past year. And we are especially pleased that our annual Victory Week Lunch, where we partner not only with our counterparts in Junction City, but with Fort Riley and the First Infantry Division, was likely the largest lunch event we've held in over a year. We had over 130 people from all three communities and our guest speaker, DA Sims. The second half of the year coming up, we're just about booked. I only need one more speaker for December. And again, a wide-ranging field, including the State Commissioner for Behavioral Services from the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services, K-Dads, Andrew Brown. I've actually, he's going to speak about suicide prevention among military veterans and family members. And I met him through Commissioner Estabrook. We are on the Governor's Military Council to prevent suicide for those, for service members, family members, and veterans, which has been really worthwhile project. But we also have some other speakers. We have Todd Holmberg from McCain talking about their renovation over at K-State. And we also have the Director of Fort Riley Family Morale Welfare and Recreation, also known as MWR, talking about some wellness efforts and other programming provided by them. And so that should be pretty interesting. But what I'm really, really proud of with the MRC Lunch is it's the best place for local Manhattanites to interact with Fort Riley uniform and civilian personnel and their families. And we literally have school bus drivers and bank presidents at that lunch, such a wide variety of people. It really was, over the past year, the place for discussions on COVID mitigation efforts and Fort Riley general orders, face-to-face, one-on-one, between leaders in Manhattan and leaders from Fort Riley. And more than once, I know those kind of conversations took up place at the MRC Lunch. And I'm really proud that I was able to help contribute to those kind of conversations. I've also expanded a lot in the past probably two years, working on advocacy and economic development. This is a picture from April 21st, when Governor Laura Kelly signed Kansas House Bill 2066, known as the Occupational License Reciprocity Bill. This legislation provides expedited license reciprocity, the recognition of professional license, professional occupational licenses gained in one state by another to all Kansans. So specifically, though, this really does benefit military spouse employment. And Kansas will benefit by filling much needed jobs in a variety of sectors, but especially in teaching and nursing where we certainly have a need for those professionals. I also have been involved in the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, also called D-SIP. And it was mentioned a little earlier, D-SIP provides funds for infrastructure projects in communities that neighbor military installations, where that project adds military value to both the local community and especially the installation. This year's joint effort to select a project was led by the Flint Hills Regional Council, with many people from various communities across the region working together. We selected the Manhattan Regional Airport Runway Expansion Project for submission to the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation for consideration. Hopefully, we'll know in August if we can go ahead and then submit for the grant. This project is critical to the readiness of the First Infantry Division for both personnel and equipment transportation, and for the quality of life of soldiers and their families stationed at Fort Riley. This Manhattan Regional Airport Runway Expansion Project has the support of One ID and Fort Riley Commanding General Major DA Sims, who wrote an endorsement for the project that was included in the submission. The turnaround for this is always super, super fast when they release the parameters for this grant. And as someone said when we were going over this, if this doesn't fit the bill for what they're looking for, I don't think, I don't know what they're looking for. So keep your fingers crossed. And then also, I am actively working with Talent Strategies Coordinator Amber Wilhelm, engaging Fort Riley Transition Assistance Program, Army Community Service Employment Readiness, the Career Skills Program, USO Pathfinder, the Manufacturing Institute, and other Fort Riley entities as needed to assist with filling vacant positions in Manhattan with transitioning soldiers and military spouses, and to engage the military and military connected with the Manhattan Hype Young Professional Program. Just last week was the first time I was allowed to actually hand things out at the weekly Victory Welcome. And I handed out stuff about Made for Manhattan, which I think is a really great fit for new military to the area. Check out that website. It is really great for someone new to the area. And then I, there happened to have been a lot of young officers and warrant officers at that event, and I handed out a lot of hype pamphlets as well. It's a really good fit for some of Amber's programming. And then some fun stuff for me, oh, excuse me, I wasn't done. I turned the page, pardon me. I'm also providing economic development assistance with project proposals by building Fort Riley as a part of Manhattan's regional economic development story and leveraging Fort Riley assets such as talent, logistic capabilities, cyber, medical resources, and defense contracting to drive business retention and create opportunity for business attraction to the area. And then I'm also working a bit with George Cant on the Workforce Development Committee and the Childcare Task Force, connecting him to resources on post that can help with his efforts there. So programming. And here's the fun stuff. The Little Apple Brigade, we've recruited some new members in the past year. We capped Little Apple Brigade membership off at 50, so we're probably about 46, 47 right now. But it's exciting that even after COVID, people want to engage with Fort Riley, reaching out there. And we did hold our April event. We had to do it a little different in shifts to keep the numbers just so. We didn't have to keep the numbers just so, but I think everybody was so new to socializing. It made everybody a little more comfortable. And I think that really is of value to have the leaders of Manhattan and the leaders of Fort Riley in a room together to, able to talk about things that they might not have the opportunity to do so. The Little Apple Brigade Ball is Saturday, October 23rd, at Manhattan Country Club, a little early this year. I always joke, one day, K-State's going to ask me what day is good for me in November, so, and they can schedule football around it. But I'll keep waiting. Military Family Appreciation Night at the Cal Valley Rodeo is a week from Thursday. Every single one of my sponsors came back. The One ID Band's usually on vacation, but I've got a great replacement band, a country western band. A soldier from there is going to sing the National Anthem. The Kin Landing General's Mounted Color Guard is going to present the flags at the opening of the rodeo. We have a free picnic. I've provided Fort Riley with 1,500 free tickets provided by Riley County and several, several, several sponsors. several, several sponsors. So that is going to be a fun night. I'm excited to get back at the rodeo. It's going to be a fun night. I know it. And, oh, and locally, we have three outlets providing tickets. One ran out of tickets in two days. So they are a hot commodity. Also, Fort Riley Day at K-State's back on September 18th. It's going to be just like it always was, I hope. But the picnic is not in Cat Town. It is in Toynton Family Stadium this year, which is a little interesting, a little different. I'm excited to see how that goes. The best football game of the year, as I always say. I am also actively planning a USA Annual Meeting in Washington, DC. It looks like it's going to be the usual annual meeting. So far, so good. It does, they are holding off registration for the Army 10 Mile around Sunday morning, but there is a live component to it, I believe. So that's good. We're working on having a White House tour this year, but we're going to have our social. Hopefully, I'm sure we will have some really great One ID former leadership there, because we do have some former commanders in really high, great places. So that should be great. And we're working on having one of them as our speaker at our chapter lunch. We will do Hill visits. We will stop by Baker Donaldson, the state lobbyist again, so hopefully that'll be great. I know that is an investment, but we already have 18 people signed up to go. So I'm pleasantly surprised at those numbers, but I think it's going to be a really great trip. It's October 10th through 13th. And then finally, the Manhattan Veterans Day Parade. I've mentioned this already when I, last time I briefed you, Manhattan held one of the few Veterans Day Parade in the nation last year. Very, very proud of that. We are going to be on Thursday, November 11th. We are going to honor Gulf War veterans, because this year is the 30th anniversary of the first Gulf War, Desert Shield and Desert Storm. And we are knee-deep in the planning of that. And so, once again, I'm really proud of being able to hold this position. I have learned, grown so much since I started this job, since I started serving this community in this way. I knew I wanted to keep my feet in the water when my husband retired from the Army eight years ago. And I have just grown and learned so much, and this job has just become, encompassed so much more than I could have ever thought of when I first started. So thank you. And if you have any questions now, I'm happy to entertain them, but of course, you can always reach me at the Chamber.
Are you still, I went with you, I think it's probably a year and a half ago, to an event at Fort Riley when the soldiers were, they, they're all called into a certain area as they exit the Army.
Oh, the retirement ceremony?
Well, it wasn't, maybe it was.
Okay.
I don't know, but it's an effort to try to convince them to come to Manhattan.
Okay. Well, so there, there is a monthly networking, business networking effort.
It's sometime before they retire.
Right.
But they already, I mean, the Army already knows they're leaving.
Right. So, so this is for any soldier exiting the Army, not just retiring. And it's called, they call it like a networking social. And they haven't had one since COVID. And they have not resumed quite yet. I'm thinking they must soon, because they just reopened the Weekly Welcome. Where, and granted, I have been briefing at those, but like I said last week, they are now allowing people to, to hand things out. And that networking social had a component, like an information fair-type component.
Things aren't quite back to normal.
So they're pretty close to getting there. And so as we, you know, I was just in a meeting yesterday where we were talking about it with Kansas Works. Joe Bruner was there, and then there's a gentleman who's on site at Fort Riley from Kansas Works, and he was mentioning it, but it wasn't up, it's not up and running yet. Once it is, you know I'm going to bring Amber there.
Do they have something like that for civilian retirees also? Because I, I don't know how many are retiring at any one time, but it would seem.
I'm not sure.
You know, retirees do have some life left.
Well, the thing with a lot of this, not all, I certainly will not say all, but many of the civilian employees at Fort Riley are already retired from their first job with the Army.
I see.
So, so they usually, a lot of, and I don't know the percentages of that, but I know a large percentage might want to retire and retire.
I know at the time, you actually had trouble trying to find out who the retiring military people were, because the Army wasn't that forthcoming with it.
They're not real forthcoming. And, and there's also numbers with, I mentioned a little bit of spouse employment. You can't, the Army can't track anything with spouse employment. So those numbers in terms of, you know, there's no idea what they are, because they can't ask that, they can't track that, the way they track other things.
I just thought I'd ask about those two things.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Anytime. Okay. Well, thank you so much. I'm going to pass it off to Karen Hibbert then, and I don't.
I don't know. I'll help you.
Okay.
If I can't help you, Jerry will help you. Sorry. Are you going to AUSA in October? Are you going to AUSA in October?
Okay. Well, good evening, Commissioners. We can either say we saved the best to last, or we're doing this a little bit backwards as to how visitors come into our community. We fully believe that you visit first before you choose to invest in our community, build in our community, have your business here and live in the community. So with that, it gives me great pleasure to share with you our second quarter activity as to how well we're doing. Certainly, our second quarter activity reflects that of April through June. And we started off the first week of May by celebrating National Tourism Week. of tourism to our community. Again, it was May 2nd through the 8th, and we partnered with Kansas State University Hospitality Program students. Those were those students that were passing the apples around the things that they found intriguing and exciting about Manhattan. In 2019, again, we're not counting 2020, Manhattan welcomed over 360,000 visitors into our community. And we fully believe that, again, as we return to activity more normal, that we will see those numbers once again. And I think you will agree with us, just as National Tourism Week said, "Oh, man, there is power in travel." Let's go back to the slideshow in the, I don't want to go from the beginning, I want to go to the current slide. So, there we go. Our star report, as you know, is what we really count on to show how well we're doing. And I always seem to be giving you old information, but unfortunately, it's as current as I can possibly give you. Month to month in May, you can see that we are slowly improving. Our occupancy in May was 49, 59.4%, with the average daily rate $110.38. The revenue per room, or other words, what our, what our owners were making, was $65.59. You can see that's a marked improvement from where we were in 2020 in May last year. Our supply and demand remained steady, generating those revenues of about $2.3 million for the month of May. Year-to-date, just a little bit different as well, again, slowly improving. Year-to-date through May, our occupancy was hovering right at 47.9, almost 48% occupancy, that average daily rate of $92.94. The revenue, $44.47, again, generating about $8 million in revenues through those folks that are staying in our community. I wanted to draw attention to the fact that, again, taking 2020 out of the picture, we still are behind where we were in 2019. We're about 15% behind in occupancy as we are into 2021, and we're about $18 behind in revenue per room. We're improving, but we still have room to grow. With that, I think that you will find that our June week-to-week occupancy shows how that improvement is continuing to grow. Month by month, week by week, we're seeing that we are still a destination, with leisure travel the one that is really the driving force behind that. June has been a really great month for us, with our highest week being that second week of June. June 6th through the 12th, we reflected a 70.8% occupancy. I might remind you that that week was also the same week as the inaugural Manhattan High Alumni Reunion. It also was the same weekend as Symphony in the Flint Hills. It also was the same week that we had multiple weddings. People still get married in our wonderful community. We had a lot of sport activities that were taking place, as well as some meetings that were beginning to come back. So again, there is promise. We are not out of the woods yet, but we are very encouraged by that. Our number one goal as a Convention and Visitors Bureau is to attract meetings and conferences to our, to our town. Again, we are seeing those meetings coming back again. They are hybrid, they are smaller meetings, our planners are being very cautious. We are seeing that 2022 is promising to be really a banner year for us. However, in order to keep Manhattan in mind, we sent over 600 of these great cards to our meeting planners. These cards purposely were empty on the inside. They say, "It's the journey that makes life feel grand." We utilized the talents of Tim Segal, he is a local photographer, with the intent that this card was left empty for those planners to go, "Why did they send me a card?" Because in the inside of that card, when they opened it up, there was a postcard with the same picture, and on the, on the backside of it is where they go, "Oh, that Visit Manhattan team, pretty creative." Because that says, "Oh, man, we missed meeting in Manhattan with you. Our burning desire to welcome you back made us realize we need to say hello. We left the card blank for you to send to someone, a coworker, company stakeholder, or friend. Like the prairie grass ecosystem that surrounds us, we know some things just work better together. We look forward to welcoming you soon. Visit Manhattan." We've had positive response from planners that have contacted us, either by calling or by email, that said, "We got your card, we're planning on meeting in Manhattan, this is what we're looking forward to." So with that, we felt that that was a very effective way for us to continue to count on our planners to choose Manhattan. Sports continue to be a reason visitors come into our community. The second quarter, we were fortunate to host the Big 12 Track and Field Meeting in May, which also happened to be graduation weekend for Kansas State University. We were again the host to the Bill Snyder Half Marathon, that was the Memorial Day weekend. We held soccer tournaments in May and June. We also were the host for the Kansas State High School Activities Association 3A Baseball and Softball Tournaments that were held here. And we also hosted the Central Links Golf Tournament and the Konza Prairie Amateur at Colbert Hills and at the Manhattan Country Club. Besides sporting events, leisure travelers to Manhattan enjoy a variety of activities. Camping at Tuttle Creek State Park, grabbing snow cones from their favorite food truck, making a big splash at Manhattan City Park, kayaking at the River Pond, or on the Kansas River, sipping wine out at Liquid Art on their patio. Many times, we never really know who visits Manhattan, but thanks to social media, we do have a peek as to who does come. Melissa Valesanor is a stand-up comedian, she's an actress and impressionist, and a current cast member at Saturday Night Live. She was in Kansas City performing on June 16th, and she just happened to make a way to Manhattan for a fun day of ziplining at Wildwood Adventure Park. And then she had breakfast at the Chef Cafe before heading on to Denver for another performance. Oh, man, we do love our visitors. The inaugural event of Manhattan High School's Alumni Reunion in Aggieville, June 11th through the 13th, was a success. Bars and dining establishments each hosted different decades in Aggieville, providing a venue for classmates to meet, get reacquainted, and reminisce. Aggieville Business Association coordinated multiple bands for live performances, and a car shore, car show, and a parade kicked off things on Friday, June 11th. We had great feedback from, from the gatherings, and we look forward to the event growing stronger each year. Visit Manhattan also partnered with the Konza United Way for the inaugural Restaurant Week on June 11th through the 20th. Twenty restaurants participated. Restaurant Week was a huge hit, supporting United Way, our dining establishments, encouraging locals and visitors alike to get out and enjoy. Social media helped with the success of this event, with our website having 782 visits for our Visit Manhattan's Restaurant Week listing. Our office sold out of passports on the first day of Restaurant Week. So again, people were hungry to get out and enjoy. Our website continues to increase visits, and we give, that gives us reasons to celebrate. We've, we have experienced a 62% in website visits from quarter one to quarter two. We are goal setters, and we're only 18,964 website users away from reaching our yearly goal. We fully believe that with our new website and with the interest in coming to Manhattan, we will be able to achieve that. As we constantly share with you about our email marketing, connecting us both to our leisure and meeting planner, again, continues to be consistent. The industry standard of open rates is 10%, and that is ideal. Both of our communications have open rates well above average, affirming to us that our communications are anticipated and well-received. Designed to be easily digested on your phone, your tablet, or desktop, it's easy to stay connected with Oh, Manhattan. Keeping tabs on our organic social media numbers, we have already increased our followers by 5%, again, which was our yearly goal. We have a total of 17,084 followers, which tells us as a staff that looks like we need to up our goal by 10%, and I think you would agree with us. So our new goal, we believe, is achievable, and it's just a minor, 18,792. But who's counting? We are. Our second quarter social media campaigns are all of our own in-house marketing efforts. We have surpassed the total number of impressions from our first quarter by nearly $200,000, 200,000 people. Our clicks are 5,000 short, again, of surpassing first quarter. All of our marketing efforts are made with our mission statement in mind, and that is to expand the local area economy by attracting visitors. As we look to our 2022 budget, we are dependent on that transient guest tax being strong. The CBB typically receives about 60 to 65% of the total transient guest tax collected on a yearly basis. As you know, our 2021 budget took a drastic hit with the pandemic, and we had limited funds in which to use. And we have made and will continue to make changes, which, which still limit our abilities to market. In 2021, the CBB received $601,794. Originally, we had requested $9,924,708 to be placed in the city budget. And again, because of the pandemic was why we received fewer dollars. In the 2022 budget, we anticipate the transient guest tax collections to be much stronger, near, near $1.6 million to be, to be exact, $1,560,686. Of that amount collected, we ask that 1.6 Of that amount collected, we ask that one-point-one million be directed to the CBB. To market effectively, to attract conferences, to attract leisure travelers, and to market Manhattan takes funds. Our programming is set by the funding we receive, and only until we receive those dollars do we set our programs in stone. We appreciate the confidence you have in us, in the Convention and Visitors Bureau, as we market Manhattan. Your leadership is greatly appreciated as you guide our community through these challenges of budgeting year after year, but certainly, you are charting uncharted waters that you've never had to do before. We value your confidence in the CBB as we diligently work together to promote Manhattan. With that, who has the first question for me?
No questions, but you did an outstanding job. I hope, I do see a thriving economy ahead of us, and I think people are eager to come and meet up with family, friends, events, and such. So I do think that trend is going to go upward really fast, and it's a very positive trend. So thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for putting aside a little bit of reserve to kind of, you know, work our way through this, and your ask is very reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think one of the things that we have realized through this pandemic is how social we are, and certainly Manhattan's efforts to promote an exciting and a great community to come and experience is really something that people are yearning to come back and experience once again. So I appreciate your comments.
What does it look like in terms of using the new rec centers for bringing in some sporting events?
Sure. Rec centers are beginning to gather enthusiasm. As you know, I shared with you last quarter our sports marketing piece, and Marcia is tracking that diligently, of interest of people that are wanting to utilize our facilities. I don't have that in front of me of who those folks are, but certainly, as we continue to introduce people to that venue, to those venues in that they're open, it's very much on our radar to get people to be aware of using those.
Okay, and how does it look? I guess the Marriott is going to come online.
Marriott is...
Summer, that's another hundred and twenty-one rooms?
Hundred and twenty-seven rooms, and that slated to come on mid-August. They were hoping the fifth might be the 12th sometime in August. They have had supply chain challenges, is what the challenges are. Actually, I worked with a, we worked very closely with, it's Meetings, Meet Kansas, it's a meeting publication that we have marketed a lot with in attracting meetings from Missouri. Talked with their editor today. They want to come to Manhattan to see our conference center expansion, as well as the new hotel, and to refresh what Manhattan's meeting offerings are, but they want to hold off until they can actually get into that conference center, because they then will help share that word for us as well of what our offerings are.
Okay. And I wanted to thank you for coordinating all these various Christmas events. I've been on several meetings with you, and I guess, you know, we had Christmas in July here just recently.
That's right.
Down at the Discovery Center with the Harleys and all that, so we've got that kicked off, and it looks like we've got a good lineup for the holiday season, so.
We're very excited about that, and the Discovery Center, certainly, they were the champion of making that happen, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows that Santa is always watching. So he was there, he was making the list. Six hundred people came to that event, so just be careful.
Yep, so I'm looking forward to the holiday season, and that should drive up our tax receipts, hopefully.
Hopefully.
He is the best Santa.
Santa's wonderful.
I judge all other Santas by him.
What can you tell me about the hotel or whatever that Colbert Hills is building? Is that going to be eight, ten, twelve, thirty rooms? Is it more like cottages, or how's that?
They're cottages, they're lodges, and Bernie Haney is the chairman of our steering committee, and he shared at our last steering committee meeting that those have been delayed just a little. They should be completed by November is when those should be up and going. And they're four-plex, I believe, and there's four of them, I think, as to how many there are.
So is that something that is going to collect the transient guest tax too, or is that going to be somehow, does it fall under a different category?
Yes, they will collect, yes.
So they'll be considered, yeah?
Yes.
For anybody into some hotel rooms, so, okay.
Any questions?
I have a question, well, two parts. One is, I got some feedback, of course, the Wamigo Show and fireworks, and why doesn't, some feedback goes, "Why doesn't Manhattan have kind of a Fourth of July type of, or summer-type event?" We did have Christmas in July, so that is one thing, but there's still some people that are missing, you know, that Stampede draw, right? That we had Stampede, we got to fill that gap somewhere and other ways. But the second part, of course, back to Christmas, is do we have, I know Marcia had been exploring kind of that village concept, and I didn't know if that was something that was getting more traction, or if we needed to do anything to help that for this year, or that was more of a next-year type of thing?
That has been explored. Right now, that is, that village Christmas market, if you wish, is on hold for another year. Certainly, the mayor has been very much in touch with us and in tune with us. Our goal this year is to make sure that we can market the holiday season more efficiently and effectively, so people can see, "Oh, my goodness, depending on what weekend I'm in the community, there's a lot going on." As we've worked on that, we've seen that there's a lot going on. I do believe, with confidence, the mayor could probably address this as well, that that is a long, long-goal vision, to only add and enhance to the celebrations that's happening. So, and again, to the Fourth of July efforts, our community is a regional effort. It does take a huge amount of manpower and money in order to have a huge celebration, and certainly, our neighbors to the west and to the east both have long-term and longtime traditions that certainly are champions for the entire state of Kansas.
And just to answer your question, a major logistics issue on all events, on points, Marketplace Square, Blue Earth Plaza's electrical.
Yeah.
And we've got a defect in our electrical system, and of course, with the holidays, everybody wants to plug in lots of lights, and until we get that fixed, that's the main reason we had to put that on hold, because we just couldn't power it. It wasn't possible, and Ron's got the details, and the city electrician, you know, has worked it all out. We know what we need to do, we just have to finance it.
Right. So we'll bring more visitors to town to help finance. There you go. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Can Ron have one question, just to sum up, as everyone's watching here? There's, you know, there's two budget requests here. One, you know, five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, eighty dollars. That's an eco-devo fund?
That's correct.
So everyone's clear. And then the transient guest tax, the one-point-one million, that's transient guest tax fund. So none of that is mill levy, or, you know, general fund, or any of that, just for those watching out there trying to figure out what this was all about. But it is, you know, about one-point-six million dollars that goes into the chamber, but the investment there is designed to generate, you know, additional income for the city, and we should get a good return on our investment.
I would just add that, you know, I think some people ask, "Well, you know, why isn't this request part of your regular request with all other outside agencies?" And it's a unique relationship that we have with the Chamber, so we have a contractual relationship to provide services that if they weren't providing them, we would have departments in the city that would be providing those services. So it's a little bit different than your typical outside agency request, and it has been a longstanding relationship.
What is the other main uses of the transient guest tax in this scenario, about the four-hundred-and-fifty, five-hundred-thousand-dollar difference? What's that, is it Convention Center?
So we're funding both, we are budgeted to fund both downtown Manhattan and Aggieville Business Associations through transient guest tax funds. We also fund the Manhattan Arts Center out of transient guest tax funds and the Wolf House. We also provide funding for debt service to the Conference Center out of this fund. Am I missing anything?
Annenberg.
Annenberg Park on the sports turf.
Sports turf.
Payment, debt service payments.
Nothing for the Discovery Center out of that right now?
That's correct. We switched that to Special Partner Rec.
I did just have one comment. Sometimes, in things that the Chamber does, the city doesn't get credit for our contributions, and so sometimes, not every time, or not in a big way, but it is, I think, important that the citizens know that our community values what you're doing and that the city supports it. So sometimes, we're the only source of funding, and sometimes, we're one of the contributors to funding. So I just would like to hear that occasionally, considering the torture sometimes for determining the budget. Thanks.
Okay, we have item C on the agenda, which is to review and discuss final steps of the Manhattan Development Code process. And I believe that Chad Bungar is going to come up and speak to this particular topic.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I was anticipating you were going to take a break, so I didn't prepped up here. But I won't take very long. I don't have a presentation. You've heard me talk about the Development Code for several meetings now, and we've gone through A to Z through the articles, to the point where we're looking for any feedback on topics that we either need to work a little harder on, we've missed the mark, or, you know, we need to add into it. We've asked this question from the Planning Board, and we're meeting with the Ordnance Advisory Committee tomorrow evening. We'll do the same. Some comments from the Planning Board is, the, excuse me, missed my notes here, some residential design standards. They wanted to make sure we weren't limiting architectural character or design. I think what we have developed only enhances that, or at least supports architectural design, doesn't really, shouldn't be distracting. They wanted us to tweak a few parking standards that they thought were not quite right. And then we've heard from the Ordnance Advisory Committee that we need a little bit more work on some new elements with our subdivision standards in terms of site grading and right-of-way design, some elements there that we've been working with Parking Rec on. So those are some comments we've heard thus far. To date, I've met with a few landscape architects through their local chapter, developers, the Flint Hills Association of Realtors. Next week, have a meeting with the Chamber and the Flint Hills Area Builders Association membership, so hopefully, they'll be able to listen to me talk and not vice versa. And then we have an open house on July 29th here at City Hall at 5:30, inviting the public for those, you know, community members that we haven't found a group to see them yet. We're opening up to the community. We have a few more groups, like the Civil Engineers and Local Architect Chapters, that we want to meet with also, because they're good partners with us. So we're getting out there to get comments. Haven't heard a whole lot from those groups that we've met with thus far. Hopefully, that's a good sign, and we're not, they're not surprising us at any time during this process. But I'll stop talking, and I would really appreciate your feedback on things we need to look at further, big or small, not necessarily edits or typos, those sort of things, but topics, issues, concerns. We'll take notes and then address those and come back mid-August to see if we've got those things right, and then proceed forward.
Okay, I'm pretty happy with the process. I already provided my notes. I had four, five little minor, you know, items for you to consider. That's it, and I trust the other Commissioners have done the same, so you can integrate, you know, our comments, make it easier for this final meeting.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yes, Commissioner Ready? I don't, I think we've gone through this very thoroughly. I think the minor suggestions I had were just that minor. I think it would be more productive for the people that are actually going to be utilizing each of these, the document and specifics to their needs. And sometimes, you may not know for a year or two till people say, "Oh, I need to renovate. What do I need to do?" And they say, "This is all messed up."
Right, right.
So people don't know until they start doing it, but I think it's a pretty hefty project, and I'm glad it's coming to an end, where it's easily, major things for me were that it's easily accessible, people can find whatever they need to. The definitions are, you can easily find out what they mean with your cursor going over it, and it's been a daunting process, but hopefully, it's easily accessible, and developers, and anybody in Manhattan and outside of Manhattan can figure out what they need, if they want to develop something here, or if they want to expand anything. So I think that was the primary goal of the project. So hopefully, that's what you see from your end. It's also to reduce your own work and staff work, so you're not answering the phone all the time or answering emails to it. But yeah, other than that, I think it's pretty good at how you handled all of this.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. And to your point about someone finding an issue a year later, I think we will, you know, every six months, do a checkup, and if we got a tweak to make, or we've missed a mark, we have no problem with staff proposing an amendment to get something right. It's not etched in stone. We can definitely make changes.
I wanted to ask how you, like the comprehensive land use plan, there's a requirement to, for the Planning Board and City Commission, who else, to review that on an annual basis and make suggestions or changes as, because life does change.
Right.
Communities need to change. Are you planning something like that for this, an annual review also?
We'll probably do that, as I've just mentioned, that, you know, six-month, twelve-month, eighteen-month, kind of check in with different groups. You know, the standards are the standards, so there isn't a statutory requirement or a policy requirement like we have with comprehensive plan or other plans. But for the short term at least, we will check back in with you all, Planning Board, and then our partners, just to see if they've uncovered any...
Especially as you start up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I'm encouraged, I'm hopeful that it is, it will be as you have described it, with simplicity, without sacrificing, sacrificing the quality that our community expects. And your planning profession standards should bode well for the document and our future.
Thank you. Time will tell, I guess, and that's the point of it all, so.
Okay, and we didn't have anyone sign up for public comments, and if anybody in the audience would like to speak, no?
Right.
And a few left, then there's no public comments, and so there's no possible motion. Appreciate the briefing. We have one last thing to do this evening, and that's an executive session, and we're going to need about thirty minutes, and we might need a little bit of a break, so if we could make the motion and maybe do this till 9:15 PM?
Mayor, I move that we recess into executive session to discuss legal issues in contract negotiations pursuant to KSA 754319B2, the exception for consultation with legal counsel on matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship, and to resume the open meeting at?
9:15?
9:15 in the City Commission Room.
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Motion carries five to zero.